So Cal Gas right now and report an emergency. And more I'll save the rest for a minute later. So I'm here.
Thank you. And then Skylar, your video is also not showing quite yet. And then Dennis, as soon as Skylar's on video, and Craig is back in his seat, you're good to go.
I'm here.
Perfect.
Okay. We're good to go here. Got the got the gavel. Got this got the siding hammer right here. Still have it after almost. I don't want to tell you how long. Anyway, okay, there we go. Good evening, friends and neighbors. I would like to call and order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of the date of April 3, 2023. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. That's just not true anymore. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from the remote locations. All votes will be taken by Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org front slash virtual meeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer to be rec those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raised hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is open. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute each for each speaker than the first time for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, would you please show the slide if in fact Alex, you are working this evening? And so our public will know. Somebody will show it.
Alex is working with us this evening. If you are using a cellphone or a tablet, you can press star nine to unmute yourself. You can use star nine to raise your hand in the meeting.
There you go. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
He's here.
I know.
There he is.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Peak?
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Terrific. Hopefully, Mr. Commissioner Hill is okay. We'll call approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the agenda as staff recommends with item four A continued to four seventeen. And I don't know what to do with four C. Whether it's continued to a data uncertain.
Why don't we ask Richard what he plans for that?
Chair from A real quick.
Please.
And the applicant requested the deviation, or excuse me, remove the deviation request. Should it not need a deviation? There's no requirement for this commission to hear the item. And Pat, do you see as if they've removed the deviation? Will that allow to go back to a director level decision? Or do I need to keep it here? Sorry, didn't mean to spring this one on you.
Correct. And so and and correct me if I'm wrong. What I understand is that they will be coming back with different plans. At which point, if those need a deviation, we will schedule that for or for a hearing item before this commission. So the specific application doesn't need to be continued in that 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 application has been withdrawn.
So I just make a motion to withdraw that application. So those that that the agenda, the motion is to continue the agenda, have the agenda staff recommends with item four C, deleted item four A, continue to date April seventeenth.
Oh, sorry, I got it.
Okay, roll call.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 6, 2023.
Since we're not in the building, we don't have any ceremony ceremonial presentations. But we do have written and oral communications from the public. Rebecca, do we have anybody that would like to speak to us tonight?
No one has signed up in advance of the meeting. If you're present in the meeting this evening and you would like to speak on an item which is not on the current agenda, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen now.
All those fine people we were looking at.
And I've seen none.
Okay, very good. Commission, we have a I'm sorry.
Somebody just raised a hand in the meeting.
Okay.
So if you could unmute. If you could unmute for Bernard Renee?
Yes, I'm using my husband's laptop. This is Elaine Renee Weissman about application Cliffside Drive and Grasswood Avenue. I'm we're available to answer questions.
Okay, and so public comment is for items that are not currently on the agenda. So if it's specific to that item, we'll we'll mention that when we get down to that point in the agenda.
Okay, I think she got that. Okay, planning commission and staff comments and inquiries commissioners. I see Vice Chair's hand is up. It may have been left up from before, but do you have something Vice Chair Mazza?
Yeah, a couple of things. The the item we we did not hear, the gas station. At the last meeting, we stated if they didn't come to this meeting, enforcement action would be taken. So my question is, now that we've taken it off our plate, I guess if they don't show up. Is what happens is enforcement action still going to be taken? Or does it come back to us as the original application? Or whatever?
Think we're allowed to be mean to him starting right now.
Here, would you like me to speak now? So we I've asked our code enforcement officer this morning, once I found out that they had withdrawn their application yesterday to contact the the applicant for the station owner. The to see when they would have a complete set of plans to us. And also to notify them of the daily violation fee or citation fee. The applicant, after speaking with them explained, they would give us a full set of plans this coming Wednesday, a day after tomorrow, the fifth. The code enforcement officer has put them on notice that if we do not receive those plans by the fifth, that starting Wednesday, they will be subject to daily fines. So about a $500 citation fee is what I was told. Daily. And so that will start on Wednesday, the fifth, if we do not receive a complete submittal and it's not the applicant was made aware verbally and in writing that it can't be a partial submittal. You know, they're they owe us a dollar. They can't give us 99 cents. It's got to be the full dollar. And it's our understanding that what they're presenting at this point is that with the new lighting engineer they hired, they have a plan that does not require a deviation. And what we're missing at this point, and I think Tyler is on the call, he can jump in if I misspeak. But we have a photometric plan, but we don't have any of the details of the particular light fixtures. And then also the additional information such as the temperature of the lights so that we can make certain it's consistent with the ordinance. So if they don't follow through on that, then yes, starting, like I said, our code enforcement officers already involved contacted them contacted them today. And starting Wednesday, the citations will start.
Okay, Richard, second question, that that is if they don't have an application in. The other five or six stations. If they put if any of these stations put in an application, does that? And you approve it. How long do they have to actually do it? I mean, when do the fines start if they don't? Don't do anything. They just give you a set of plans.
Certainly. So we've and Tyler can jump in here by misspeak. I think I saw him move around. Oh, there he is. If I'm not mistaken, Tyler, we've approved the other five gas stations, correct?
Yes, they're approved through planning and they're just about done with plan check.
Right. So it's when folks are non-responsive, like any code enforcement application, when we have to remedy in a a violation. If they do not respond in a timely manner, and typically Doug, our code enforcement manager, gives folks two weeks. If they don't respond within two weeks with the materials we asked for, then they are subject to citation. So four of the five gas stations are completing plan check. And once that's done, there'll be a time window for them to obtain permits and get started on the work. The other, the the fifth gas station, if you will, which would be Tyler Cracked the Mobile at the corner of PCH and Webway, it has installed its lights.
The Chevron, yeah.
Chevron, sorry.
Okay, and then my last question, which you can answer after Craig, is can you just give us some idea of how bad our schedule is going to be for the next couple of months? It seems like everything's being moving forward along and they're all backing up, but I'm not sure. Do we have super long meetings is my question? And you can wait till your comments just give us that.
Understand.
Commissioner Hill?
Oh, thank you. Three things. Number one, I've been really sick for a few days and I had a telehealth to this afternoon and they urged me to go to the emergency room right away. They think I have pneumonia. I don't know if that's called for or not. I'm still, you know, ambulatory and everything, but if I have, if I'm even less coherent than usual, it's because I have a little brain fog and I'm hopefully you'll bear with me and you know, if I'm not making sense, let me know. And okay, number two, just generally about lighting. I was going to say this about this item, but just generally. I had asked a while back, what is the the minimum requirement for safety? If the state requirement for how much light do you have to have for a place to be safe? And I noticed and and we've never gotten that. And I've looked at the Ralph's parking lot at night, late at night, and it's actually pretty dark. And the gas stations, including the one right across the corner at on Webway, which is better than it was. But they're still definitely a lot brighter than the Ralph's parking lot. And I just wondered what are the what are the safety requirements that make those two so different? And are the requirements really different? Because basically, you just need to see what you're doing. And Ralph's lighting satisfies that. And the gas station, you know, if it's a security question or whatever, well, A grocery stores have that too. And B, cameras can see in almost no light these days. So I just don't know. It seems like we should be working from the baseline of what is absolutely required. And then saying, what do we allow beyond that? Just a thought. And then the last comment is I got a voicemail from someone concerned about the tattoo salon and making noises about well, this is going to invite bikers and tourists and how how residents serving is this really? And you know, I I haven't called them back, but because I I've been kind of a state today, but with the illness and the sudden gas emergency up the street. So just to put it out there that that this is clearly something different than a tattoo parlor that we've been talking about. It's a salon. It's a appointment only, high end, etc. So that those are my comments. Thank you.
Hey, um. Commissioner Peak?
I have no comments other than I'm really happy that we're finally getting around to having businesses and homes in our community comply with the dark sky ordinance, just putting that out there. I think that it's been a long time coming and something special about seeing the stars at night. So
There is that. I gave you
You're here.
All right, that's it. Move along.
Commissioner Jennings?
My only comment is that Craig, your cheeks, you look very flushed. Your cheeks are much redder than they usually are. So I would, if you got a thermometer, I'd check and see whether you got a fever. And if you do, I think you ought to go down to the emergency room where I spent most of yesterday. So go take off.
Okay, well, that's sorry to hear that. Okay, so I'm the little the butterfly here because I went to my training class Thursday for the planning commission down in Anaheim. And I just had a wonderful time. It was great to sit with other people from other cities in our great state was was wonderful and to meet people and talk about all kinds of things and we're all there for the because we love what we're doing and just talking with other people. It was it was it was great. And I got to be honest. Next year, I think I'd go all three days. I think it was good for me. I think it's good for everybody. There's just Jesus must have been 500 people in that room and you know, we I had some good classes. I had processing housing development applications under SB 330. I had oh, I had a breakfast before that. We ate. It was great. And let's see, and then, oh, we played planning commission jeopardy. They, you know, they have the answer on the board and you put the question to it. So that was a lot of fun. And they gave away prizes. I did not win anything because I'm not as smart as a lot of the people in that room are. And then I had planning commission. Oh, I didn't. There was planning commission roles and responsibilities and restrictions. And I took that too. So I took I took three classes, but I could go for all three days next time because I think it's a great thing. And I think just the fact that we're all there really all kind of working together to do the same thing and to learn and to do all that. So with that, I had a I had just a great time. And then, okay, so one thing on the business side of it. Okay, so you know, our over the counter stuff. our over the counter stuff, right? Um, I, I just, I, I know that we're, we're, we are so truly planning driven, but it'd be great if we could come back around to over the counter stuff. I mean, it, you know, really if we, if there's a way we could, we could do a lot of this smaller stuff like that. I mean, instead of having to wait two or three years or a year or whatever to do simple, really simple things, um, you know, Doug's Heavens just worked would be cut by 75%. Because you can't, you, you know why people do what they do is because it takes us a long time to do things. That's not chastising anybody. It's just how that's been, but it'd be nice if we could work on something or, you know, staff could come up or, or with, uh, I know Director Bundy or somebody and, and Director Malika and whoever. If we can put together some kind of a plan where we can do stuff over the count, over the counter a little better and, and, uh, or quicker, that would, it'd be great for the community. That's all. And then, um, that's all I have. So, uh, Director Malika, it's all yours, buddy.
Certainly. Thank you. Uh, to answer, work a little backwards here, to answer Craig's question. Um, so the minimum lighting standards, those as required by state, the only reference to those in our lighting code is essentially our dark skies ordinance cannot conflict with the minimum lighting standards. Uh, nevertheless, I'll have a chat with our consultant about that to see if there is an answer to that. Uh, in some cases, um, you know, it, it, there is some good direction, but yet they don't specify lumens. Uh, for example, when we were dealing with dark skies on the Tranca's Country Mart project, the ATM machines, uh, the, I think it was the finance code actually stated that the path from the parking space, so from the parking space, the path and then into the ATM machine had to be well lit. Uh, it didn't say that it had to be a certain amount of lumens, but there had, it had to be well lit so that you could see if somebody were watching you as you, you'd walk to the ATMs. But I can ask our consultant if there's perhaps a better explanation of that and see if they could answer that type of question.
Yeah, or maybe it's something like OSHA or something, you know, if it's a safety question, there's, there's probably some baseline at the state level.
Yeah, it. It, we kind of ran into this a little bit with the high school pool. Um, it would have, I was hoping that they had a lumens, uh, specification for pool safety, but it just said adequately, adequately see the pool. I think I forget exactly how, but it, it wasn't to the, where we had somebody saying it had to be X lumens, which is, would be very helpful. Uh, but nevertheless, I can ask that question. In terms of your upcoming agendas, I've been working really hard with Rebecca to do our best to keep the upcoming agendas reasonable. Uh, for example, on your next meeting on the 17th, at this time, uh, we have a um, uh, administrative coastal development permit for wastewater system. And then one continued hearing. Uh, that was the one from tonight. And then, uh, the other item that's on there, uh, is the Malibu Inn motel. That'll be brought to the planning commission for their consideration. And then beyond that, we have, uh, a remodel and single family, which we can look at having to move. Uh, right now, that's the tentative plan, those, uh, four hearings. But once again, I need to make certain that all those reports are complete and ready for publishing this week. Some may drop off to the following meeting. And the following meeting at this time, that would be May 1st, which is where at present I only have one hearing and for a new house. And then the continuation of the TUP item, and I met with our consultant today to see how he was progressing on the comments from the commission. And he said he was working through them and would have that completed so that you guys could hear the TUP item uh, as continued to the first. So we are trying not to overburden the hearing schedule. Cause I do realize that the motel is a larger item and then also the TUPs. That's another larger item. I know we spent a lot of time on it at the last hearing. Uh, but I'm just guessing, uh, that, you know, you guys, uh, as a group, you want to have a chance to really look over what we bring back to you and then flesh it out fully.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Richard. Um. Okay, is that it? I'm sorry, buddy. Is that it?
Yes, it is, Chair. Thank you very much.
Yes, um, okay, consent calendar, previously discussed items, we don't seem to have any. And we have 3B. We have new items, so we have one, two and three. Uh, one and three, oh, Vice Sheriff Mazza, go ahead.
I can pull 3B2.
All right. So one and, one and three are, uh, our Director Malik is anyway, so we're good. So we want to, uh, we'll take 3B2 right now. Request for a determination of use of number 22 dash 001, private tattoo studio in a commercial neighborhood zoning district. And we have, is there a report? Director Malika, are we just?
So, uh, I can jump in for this one since Brian is no longer with the city. And.
Yeah, bummer.
I, poor guy was driving upwards of five hours a day.
Yeah.
I'm sure that this Monday morning, he.
Pomona's a long way from here.
Brutal. That is, uh, um, so what we have here for you is we brought back the resolution memorializing the planning commission's determination that the planning commission believes that we will need, uh, should the owner choose to pursue it, a conditional use permit application will need to be processed and presented for consideration by this commission.
Okay.
And we did not issue CUP, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Mazza, uh, Vice Sheriff, I apologize. That is correct. Did, all that this commission did was memorialize and, and that's what this resolution does is memorializes the determination that the commission made. We have instructed the, uh, the applicant that made this request, uh, that they next, the next steps, if they're interested, would be to provide us with an application for a conditional use permit. Uh, that, as I mentioned, would be decided upon by this body.
Okay, um. My only comment is after reading that again, I personally can't see how the tattoo parlor is, is anything other than visitor serving because you don't go back once you get it. Uh, so if we bring this up to a vote, I guess we do, uh, I'm gonna vote now. It's, it's, uh, what bothers me is it seems to be that we're saying that this is basically the same as a veterinarian, which is veterinarian is most definitely a neighborhood serving, um, use, because you don't bring your dog a hundred miles to go to a vet unless you're, you know, you got the $10,000 dog, I guess. And you go more than once and I don't see any, any, um, any neighborhood use for, uh, a tattoo parlor other than in a, in a commer- uh, C, CV zone. Those are my comments.
Hey, Commissioner Hill is next and then.
I got Chair Smith, before we get into deliberations, we should, we should open it up to public comment prior to getting into deliberations.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Um, if I may, just in situations like this where we have asked staff to come back with a resolution, we, the issue before us is whether what staff came back with accurately expresses what we did in the hearing itself. It's not an opportunity to relitigate everything that we discussed back in the original hearing. So with that in mind, I, we still have to have public hearing, but, but that's, the issue before us is just that limited.
Okay, very good. Um, Rebecca, do we have, I see a couple of hands, but do we, uh?
Uh, yes, the applicant, uh, Catriona McDavid Kelly, um, would be our first public speaker.
Okay.
Followed by Ryan. And Alex, can you unmute for Kat?
Yeah. Hi, this is Katrina. Um, you know, I just wanted to respond to, um, what you just said, you know, clients honestly come back to us over and over and over again. We have clients that come to us for 10 years. We have clients that come to us for 15 years. And, um, so it is actually an ongoing, our, that's what makes what we do so different. We're not doing single session, you know, tattoos that are done in, you know, one session or, or an hour or whatever. We're doing tattoos that take years, years. It's, it's a lifetime commitment. So I have to dispute that this is a, you know, a, 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 a business that we don't have repeat customers or people don't come back to us. They, they.
They come back to us constantly to finish their work. We can never finish in one setting, one sitting. So that is the thing is like they're continually coming back.
And a lot of our clients are actually Malibu residents. Um, so again, uh, that, I, I don't.
Just incorrect. Yeah.
That's all I have to say at this time. Sorry, such a response, but.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan.
Uh, yes, um, the reason I'm speaking to this is that the task of the staff to try and come up with um, a justification in the language that would comport to the use is, is an impossible task. That's the reason. Um, whether the commissioners thought that this was a high-end operation or classy, um, there, there are no conditions that would support that. There's like no valet parking or free champagne or any, you know, anything for the reasoning, um, that was given uh, for the hearing and so forth. Uh, the idea of the zoning in this city is that the use be appropriate for the neighborhood in this case. And I have nothing against the tattoo operation or parlor. And I have, uh, questioning why these folks don't want to have the greater success that they would achieve if they were to locate in the commercial visitor-serving area of the city. And it would be closer for the destination, uh, international travel business and so forth. It was listed in the record, uh, for this, uh, operation. And it would be much more appropriate for it to be, uh, located in the civic center area, for instance. So you can't change location, location, location. And the neighborhood zoning is to promote businesses that are neighborhood serving for repeat business, for travel and trip reduction and time reduction for repeat business by locals in their local neighborhood area. And if this was a locally serving business, which I think everybody realizes is not, um, there would need to be five or six of them throughout the 20 something miles of Malibu to achieve, uh, compliance with what the, the neighborhood commercial zoning, uh, calls for. So I, I see you're leaning toward, uh, creating the exception to become the rule. Um, I think it's very bad precedent and I don't think it's economically supportive of all the businesses that are displaced every time you grant an exemption to, uh, a business that is out of zoning, out of character. There's not neighborhood or resident serving and that is for international commerce or should be actually zoned and be paying the rent rate appropriate for the zone. Now this forces the competitors, the legitimate businesses that are neighborhood serving and resident serving to a higher price point because the landlord is receiving or can charge and get away with charging the type of extra rent that goes with the special exception and, uh, hosting a tenant that, that should be in a different zone. So it's not a possible task because it just doesn't comport. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Our next speaker will be.
I lost audio. Can, is anybody hearing anything?
Um, I lost audio briefly, but I've got it back. Our, our next speaker will be Joe Drummond, followed, uh, by rebuttal from our applicant. And our applicant will have about a minute and a half left on her clock.
Uh, question, why do we allow rebuttal?
Well, it's with the, at the pleasure of the chair. Um, so we'll circle back to Dennis for a decision on that after hearing Joe Drummond.
Hi there, everyone. Can you hear?
Yes.
Good. I just wanted to, I mean, I understand that this is a, a, a very artistic specialized studio. And I do understand what Ryan is saying to allow the interpretation in this zone. This new interpretation would be setting a precedent. So once you open the door to this concept, it can pop up everywhere. We don't want to be Venice or Malibu, but so I think you can allow it, but you have to put conditions on the permit to make sure that it cannot be done anywhere else. Basically, if you are going to allow this, basically it has to be a one-time thing or, or, um, like, I don't know how you do it, but whatever you can do, I guess that's a possibility. That would be what you need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. And Chair Smith, would you like to allow the applicant to respond or not?
I think they can.
And let me reduce time. Okay. And if you could unmute for Katrina?
Hey, so just again to respond, you know, we are very much neighborhood serving. As I said, a lot of our clients are in Malibu. They have long-term relationships with us. We're also booked for years. So being in a high traffic zone is absolutely not what we need and absolutely not what we want. We're a very quiet, unobtusive, creative business that we're super exclusive. So, so the idea of being in a busy civic center environment would not work for what we do. It, it's a peaceful, you know, it's a, it's, it's an experience that people need to be in a peaceful environment for. And so that is why we chose the area that we did. And that's why we've gone through this whole process. I also want to say in response to Ryan that I agree, I think that the planning commission trying to make these rules is challenging. And I would love to offer our help to make, you know, the SCUP that is extremely difficult for other people to apply for. Because we also don't want tattoo shops popping up in Malibu. We absolutely don't want it to be like Venice. We don't want to be in Venice. That's why we're applying to Malibu. And that's why we've gone through this entire process so that we can be in Malibu. Um, and we would love to help you write a CUP that would be absolutely impossible for anyone else to be granted because what we do, we're the only tattooers in the world that do what we do. So that's what I have to say. Give anything to him.
Thank you. And scrolling through, I don't see anyone else that has not already spoken.
Okay, we'll close the, up your hearing, we'll come back to the, to us. Uh, go back to Commissioner Hill who was going to speak, I guess.
Great.
I guess we're allowed to do a little bit of that, not probably a lot, but go ahead.
Yeah, well, all right, a couple of things to, to Jeff's point that we're just talking about, it was the resolution accurate to our intent. I wondered, did we not also liken this to a beauty salon? All the resolution says is veterinary. Uh, and I thought, I thought the discussion was a little broader about how this fit in with other stuff in, in that zoning district. Cause I mean, to my mind, yeah, it is, there are some features of it that are, um, more medical in a way, but in some very essential ways, it is maybe more like a beauty salon too. But I thought we talked about that.
I Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
I, I think we did talk about that, but the, the key point is that the veterinary hospital was the one use in the zone that required a conditional use permit.
Right.
We talked about doctors' offices, but that wasn't, remember, we got into some confusion about whether, whether it was in the municipal code or the, or the LIP. So that's why it only mentions, um, veterinary hospital.
Good point. And then just, um, I, I'll just mention that, yeah, I think what Katrina just said about it, not wanting to be in a commercial tourist type zone is exactly right. And to my mind, the way it was described to us. the way it was described to us, this was probably more resident-serving than visitor-serving just because of the clientele. Maybe a few internationals, but mostly people with a lot of money. And so I wondered also, did we not discuss whether it would be by appointment only? And, and what, what would that be? Or would that be something that would just be reserved to the CUP process?
That's right. That, that's, that's a CUP issue.
Okay. All right, those are my comments.
Commissioner Peak?
I'd like to make a, uh, motion to approve the, this with the staff's recommendation.
I'll second it. Great. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Go. Okay, page one. We are on to four B. Lynn test for that. Coastal development number fifteen dash zero zero two, variance numbers sixteen dash zero one nine and seventeen dash five two. Site plan review number sixteen dash zero four one and minor modification number twenty-one zero zero five. An application for the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence and associated development continued from March twentieth of this year. Here we have a staff report. Please, Doc, Assistant Director Fernandez, we have him right there. Okay.
Hi, good evening. I may need to turn off my camera. I think I'm having some internet issues. I'm at City Hall, but that doesn't, um, I guess matter, uh, uh, in terms of connectivity issues. So I'm going to turn off the, just the camera, but I'll go ahead and present the item. Hopefully the connection will be better this way. Uh, good evening, Chair Smith and members of the Planning Commission. This is a continued item from the last planning commission meeting. The item was continued before the public hearing was open. Uh, next slide, please. Good evening, excuse me. Um, next slide, uh, the subject parcel is access from Verde Mesa Lane, uh, which is a pri-
Uh-oh.
Private cul-de-sac that, that ends near the parcel's frontage. The house immediately to the east was destroyed by the Woolsey fire. Uh, next slide. The project consists of a new, uh, two-story, single-family residence, uh, new swimming pool and other, uh, associated development. Uh, next slide. The, uh, application includes variances for the fuel modification to extend into Esha and construction of slopes steeper than two-point-five to one. Uh, historical data show that at the time Verde Mesa Lane was constructed, a dirt mound, uh, was placed over the subject parcel's frontage and on the adjacent parcel to the west. Uh, this is a manufactured slope that the applicant is requesting to build the driveway over. Uh, the rest of the development is cited on slopes flatter than three to one. Also included is a site plan review for height up to twenty-eight feet, uh, for a pitch roof, um, and a minor modification to reduce the required front yard setback. Uh, the front yard setback reduction allows the residents to be sighted further away from Esha, thus minimizing, uh, uh, Esha impacts. Uh, next slide. Across the rear of the property is a stream, uh, with riparian habitat. Uh, the proposed residence was designed, uh, to overlap fuel modification areas with the neighboring resident immediately to the east. Uh, unfortunately, the neighborhood residence was destroyed in the Woolsey fire, but the new owners are pursuing applications to rebuild the same residence plus ten percent. Uh, they require few modifications for, uh, both the proposed residence and, uh, the, uh, destroyed residence, uh, if I rebuilt, uh, will overlap for the most part. Um, however, the feet, uh, further into Esha, uh, about half will be covered by the neighbor's fuel modification area. Uh, the, uh, next slide, please. The project was designed to meet the required ten thousand square foot, uh, development area. The proposed development area is, uh, eight thousand nine hundred forty-four square feet. Uh, next slide. Uh, staff conducted a recent story pool inspection and took, uh, recent, uh, pictures of the primary view location from the neighboring, uh, primary view location, uh, on the neighboring property as well as took, uh, photographs of the story pools representing the proposed residence. Uh, next slide. The property owner across the street, uh, requested a primary view determination as a, um, a result of the proposed residence. This is the view, uh, towards the, uh, south, uh, from her primary view location. It shows, uh, blue water views across the middle. Uh, towards the right, um, are the, uh, it's the orange mesh that represents the proposed residence. The proposed residence is not expected to obstruct blue water views. Uh, however, it will block non-native vegetation along the hillside and a row of trees and developing along the horizon, uh, which currently obstructs, obstructs the ocean. A staff, uh, determined that the proposed development would not be obstructing any impressive scenes from the neighbor's primary view location. Uh, next slide. Since the last planning commission, uh, meeting, uh, the agenda report and resolution, uh, were updated to include, uh, scenic resource findings. Staff was made aware that uh, the story pools for the proposed residence are intimately, uh, visible from a segment of Canaan Doom Road at a distance of um, one thousand, uh, three hundred feet. Um, uh, Canaan Doom Road is a, uh, identified scenic road for the LCP. Uh, from the location where the story pools are visible, the proposed residence would, uh, be surrounded by other large, single-family residents in the same neighborhood. The proposed residence will not obstruct any impressive scenes, uh, of the mountains or canyons. The view from Canaan Doom is, uh, also, uh, mostly obstructed with vegetation and a changeling fence, uh, which is, uh, sole parallel to the street. Uh, therefore, the project is expected to have less than significant adverse, uh, scenic impacts. Uh, next slide. Uh, uh, staff, I, it is staff's opinion that the proposed project will not, uh, have adverse, uh, scenic impacts from Canaan Doom and recommends that the planning commission approve the proposed project as condition. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Um, okay, back to us, disclosures, uh, Vice Chair Mazza.
None.
Commissioner Jennings?
I visited, uh, the site, um, when it was before us the last time, um, not an easy place to find it. Google Maps had the address all over the place. It was really difficult to kind of get to it, but, uh, all I did was take a look at the lay of the land and the views across the canyon toward Canaan Doom and so forth.
Commissioner Peak?
Same as Mr. Jennings.
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, yeah, a couple, a couple of things. We, I, I did have some email discussion with Adrian about the misnaming of the streets and how that might affect noticing. Um, he pointed out, and I appreciate that, that legally the tax assessor's map is incorrect, as is the Google map here. And that, that, there is a, a more official, uh, map that is correct. But I, I wonder, I mean, this is not like if someone inadvertently addressed Birdview Avenue as Birdview Street, for example. In that case, mail would still get there and anyone reading a notice would understand the location. But in this case, there are actually two separate distinct unconnected streets, Verde Mesa Lane and, and Drive. So according to the, to both those maps. So I think it, it, it may be a question for us to opine on whether it's proper notice to have referenced an address that is incorrect on both those maps. What, in terms of what is the public standard of information? So we can talk about that if you want. Um, but just by way of disclosure, I also looked on Google Earth Pro with the three D terrain modeling and found that this is visible from Canaan Doom Road. The staff pointed out there is a chain link fence there, but that's temporary, uh, Woolsey affected property. It's six foot high in the front yard setback, and even then you can see both through it and above it from, uh, the slightly higher roadway. So, um, I, I think, I think, um, the view from that road is something that we, we have some discussion about its significance.
Okay, um, yeah, I didn't, I didn't talk with anyone. I did, uh, at a time go back there and look at a couple of fire rebuild lots, and I liked it back there. And, um, maybe a little bit of noise from Canaan Doom, but kind of a cool spot. Um, that's all I've got. So, um, let's see.
Uh, so are there any comments from the public about this one?
Yes, if we want to open that up. Rebecca, do we have anyone?
No one has signed up in advance of the meeting to speak in public. If you are present in the meeting and would like to express an opinion on this project, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. The project architect, Ryan Levis, and the owner, Tom Maron, are both present in the meeting to respond to any questions of the commission this evening and are available to, for potential for rebuttal should someone wish to speak.
Okay.
Um, and at this time, I am not seeing a raised hand in the meeting.
Okay.
However, we do have a couple of people trying to join the meeting at the moment.
Okay, we'll wait.
Um, I mean, it, it is up to you as the chair if you would like to wait to see if they intended to speak on this item.
I see their hands are raised. So I see that you, at the bottom down there.
The hands that are raised are from Commissioner Hill and Vice Chair Mazza.
Oh, okay.
And, um, Norm Heaney has connected to the meeting. Joe Drummond is still trying to connect. And I don't know if either of the two of them have an intent to speak on this item.
Okay, I think, I think we, I think if somebody wanted to, they had to
I think you're safe to close.
Okay, Commissioner Hill was first, so back to us here. Commissioner Hill, go ahead.
Actually, John had his hand up first.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I should have known better. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
I should have known better. Um, first I want to discuss the address situation. To me, it's not which whether the assessor has it right. The question is, does the fire department have it right? And do the people who live there, has the, my question is, has the city, city allocates addresses? Has the city allocated this address in the street? Or is this just something somebody named their driveway? Because I, what I worry about is, house is on fire. You call up, you say it's on whatever it is, and nobody can find it.
Well, if it's on fire, I'm pretty sure they'll find it, but
Scarily, because the other street is halfway across town.
Yeah.
You know, the city has ever issued the address and an official street name.
So, um, the city records do show the correct information. Um, and as, uh, share with, um, uh, Commissioner Hill, uh, we, we had the track maps that, um, you know, that were used to create the, the subdivision for the area as well as the subdivision for the other, uh, area where, um, they were identifying that to be, uh, Verde Mesa Lane. Um, the Verde Mesa, the, the fake Verde Mesa Lane um, was, i- it's not a, a road. It's in fact a driveway. So driveways are, are not, are not labeled or are named uh, only streets. And so, um, it, it's, i- it's un, it's unusual for this to happen. Uh, I'm not sure, um, maybe we can reach out to the county and, uh, have them, um, update their maps, uh, to correctly um, provide the names, but all our records and, um, you know, the official records identify this correctly, uh, all our, uh, addressing. And, um, yes, when there isn't any development on a property, uh, chances are there is no address assigned to that particular parcel. And then they can make a request to the city and the city can then officially provide, uh, an address. Um, and you know, I, I can say is, you know, everything that's been addressed on this street has been addressed, uh, you know, using Verde Mesa Lane. Uh, so everything's been consistent, uh, pursuant to city records.
Okay, it is a question, Patrick, uh, can we require the applicant to correct the, uh, tax records? So the mapping services pick up the right place?
You know, th- that's basically conditioning the project on a, I don't want to say discretionary, I assume that should be ministerial, but act of another agency. So, you know, I think that the condition could potentially include used best efforts or attempt, but requiring that seems to be a bit out of the scope of our jurisdiction because we can't really speak for the, what that county assessor's process is or the, or the, or, or those tax records are. All we can do, and, and, and my office was, was in touch with planning during this, when, when Commissioner Hill, you know, brought up a valid issue. Um, I believe that the Google Maps does sh, you know, go a, a different one. And a unique thing, I believe Microsoft Bing Maps actually shows the right one, which is, which is unique. But so that, that idea of a condition to make the applicant reach out to a different agency or government body to correct one is not one I would advise, no.
If we use the word used best efforts, is there a way that staff can determine that they were used?
I mean, I would say that, you know, the, the maybe best efforts was, what, what was a poor choice of words, attempt. And in that way, as long as the applicant, you know, and once again, I'm, I'm kind of speaking off the top of my head because I, I have no idea about what that process is, but at least reached out and said, I've been made aware of this. Can you please correct it? And then if, if you, if we want to add something like that to the satisfaction of, of, of the director, that would seemingly be fine.
Or maybe say a documented attempt, so we actually get a copy of their letter or something?
Perfect. Yep.
Okay. Um, thank you. Oh, uh, let's see here. Oh, I have one other question. And that is that the Esha map you showed me, the clearance map, you showed where they overlapped cross a blue line stream. And I don't think you can clear a blue line stream of Perian habitat. Um, so I'm wondering if that should be adjusted in, in depth so it doesn't cross the blue line stream. Since it's a major stream that goes all over the ocean.
Are, are, are we talking about the fuel modification?
Yeah, the fuel modification.
So the fuel modification, uh, plans um, were drawn, uh, in the specifications required by the fire department.
Yeah, that, that may be true, but the fire department doesn't
Uh, we, we can't really, uh, revise those since those are their requirements. Um, however, um, uh, to your point, um, the fuel modification, uh, that extends into riparian habitat or a stream um, only requires that, um, the debris that's collected at the bottom of, of the ravine or anywhere in the area and dead branches of trees be removed uh, in order to comply with the fuel modification. So it could across the, the, the right, or the, um, the stream. It's just that within the area of the stream, that's all they could do. Um, and that's, uh, pursuant again to the fire department fuel modification requirements.
Well, we in the past have changed our, our fuel modifications when they, for example, when they go straight into Esha. We've had them less than three hundred feet in the past, and, and it's been in action of the planning commission. So what can we? If you looked at the map, you'd probably knock off twenty feet or something, and, and you're not, you're not messing with a blue line string. Technically, the fire department has to go to fish and game to touch them. They don't trump federal law. And uh. And so I'm just trying to avoid that. If you think the fire department can get a permit to. Clear a string. Then we should leave it in, but I don't think they can. And I don't think the applicant can either. Since the stream is on his property.
It, it has been standard practice, again, for fuel modifications to. Show their full two hundred foot extent. Um, and then um, again. You, you don't need uh, fishing wildlife if all they would be doing is removing, you know, trash and debris that's collected. Uh, in, in the riparian habitat area and removing dead branches, which is all they would be required to do. Within um. Fishing wildlife jurisdiction. So um.
Is that anywhere in our staff report, can we put that in there?
Now, now, if you wanted. To uh, require that they um, negotiate with the fire department. Or a modify fuel modification. Uh, so that they can revise it, I, I would, I would. You know, I, I would. I, I don't know if that would be possible, um, so I, I would. Hesitate to add that as a condition. Um, in case it isn't possible.
We have changed fuel modification zones. As a part of the commission.
Only when the, only when they bring. Their fuel modifications already approved by the fire department with, with the uh, adjusted uh, boundaries. Um, and those are the only instances that I'm aware of, unless Richard can remember any other incident.
Is Richard still around?
Yes. No, I. I think Adrian, I agree with you on how you characterize that, and. The only thing I would add is. I, I feel like in situations where we modified fuel modifications, we might have actually continued it so they could go to the fire department. Uh, because we've. We've always worked with the fire department and not overstep their Department of Forestry Division.
So which means that we can continue this. Or otherwise, can we put in the language and say, if, if you say the requirement is, you may only remove. Dead sticks and branches, can't we put that in there?
That's, that language so.
We can't hear you.
Be there, it's part of their few modification requirements.
Where, can you show us where it is in the staff report?
It would be in the uh. In the uh, fuel mod, the approved fuel modification plan. Not sure, we'll look to.
It would actually stay in there. That you can't do that.
It, it's, it's part of the fire department fuel modification guidelines, so it's, it's part of their requirements for fuel modification. And I've seen that language in the few modification plans. It, it, you know, it provides you with, with uh, what you can and can't do based on all the different zones.
Have you ever seen a fireman come out and inspect it?
I, I, I don't, uh, I'm not around when those inspections take place.
I'm, I'm just not seeing a lot of traction on this, Vice Chair Maza.
Well, there will be traction when somebody complains, but go ahead, skip it. I'm just trying to save the applicant grief. I would like to make a motion, and you can vote it down. That um. Uh, we approve the project as recommended. With. The. Applicant required to make a documented. Attempt to correct. Address problems on the property with the LA County. Tax Assessor. And. That the last thirty feet of the. Clear, uh, fire department clearance be restricted to only. Dead branches and whatever that says in the uh. In the fire department requirements, I want to put it right up front. Because I doubt if the applicant or his architect has read the fire department. Details or his contractor, so I'd like to put it in our resolution. It should have no effect if what you say is true, it's already there. It'll be in our resolution rather than some obscure document. In the back of our, in, in some manuals in there.
I'll, I'll second that for discussion.
Commissioner Jennings.
Is your suggestion, John, is your motion rather, that um. That we put into our resolution. That as i- in the last. Or the, the westernmost or easternmost thirty feet of the fuel modification zone. The applicant will have to comply. With the fuel modification requirements stated. In the uh, fire department's fuel modification plan?
Yeah, I would, uh, I would like to amend that to say. Within ten feet of. The blue line stream, because I don't know, the thirty feet I picked out of the air.
Okay, so within ten feet of the blue line stream, they have to comply with the, with. Whatever requirements are stated in the fire department's fuel modification plan, right?
Well, I would like to, and if I can get your vote, I'll change it, but uh, I'd like to say. As required by the fire department. Blah, blah, to remove only and exactly the words they say.
Well. Sticks and. And do we know what the exact words they say are? Because I'm, I'm willing to support. The idea that they're required to, to, to comply with the fire department's fuel modification plan. And specifically say in our resolution that they have to do that. But we don't know, I don't know what the fire department resolution says, and, and apparently nobody else here does either, so. You lost me there.
Well, the reason I'm saying it is so they know.
And, and. I think if we put it in our resolution. That tells them that they need to go find that document. And find out what it says and comply with it, because that's what we're telling them to do.
Well, uh, Richard, do we have the? The language that you quoted? Maybe you can read it, you know, sticks and stones and. Whatever it was.
Certainly, that. That was Adrian, um, I believe he's looking.
Let me, let me take Commissioner, I'll take Commissioner Peak real quick, go ahead, Commissioner Peak.
Um, there was a little bit of question in regards to the address and whatnot, and I think it's the, it's my understanding that the county doesn't um. Officially even. Allow the property to have an address till it's completed. Until the permits are final for the single family residence, so I just wanted to put that out there so that everybody knows that.
Well, they have to send them their tax bill.
I understand that, but I'm just letting you.
That's why I said we had the uh. Not the county, I said the tax assessor.
All right, well, I was, I was trying to address the question in regards to the fire department and whatnot, and people showing up there, and I'm just letting you know. That they are not going to. Deal with that address until the permits. Are completed. For the said home that we're discussing right now on Verde Mesa Lane.
So you're saying. That, for example, a lot across the street from me is empty. Never been built on, I could go over there and light it on fire and they wouldn't come?
If, if, if they don't have, if the property does not have a recorded address alre- already?
Saying that property does, they all do.
But, uh, John, you're, you're failing to under, to realize that most people, when they call in a fire. They're going to give an address of a nearby house. And I, I, I think that that's. That goes without saying, you could call the fire department and say, I'm on Pacific Coast Highway, or you could say, I'm in the middle of nowhere, and they're going to either. Not know where you are, but they're going to use something called GPS, it's going to go to your cell phone, and it's going to tell them where you are. So. I, I think that we're just like. Kind of going down a little bit of a nut job road here, and let's just. Stick to what the plan is, and the plan is to focus on the project. I very much understand the concerns, I think, as Jeff does as well in regards to. Adhering to the fire department's plan down in the area that's. At near the Esha. And if we can find that language, we see it, if not, let's move on, and let's either.
The only reason I'm saying this is I doubt. I understand what you're saying. I doubt when they build this house. All of a sudden, that address will pop up. It's already there. And it doesn't work.
What it needs to pop up in it is it needs to pop up into the fire truck's computer system, and we're not, that's not our job to deal with that right now, okay? That's their job. So let's, let, let them do their job, and let's do our job. Do you want to approve the house, or do you not want to approve the house? Very simple.
I don't want to burn the neighborhood down, that's all, very simple.
Okay, I'm not, nobody's trying to imply that here, nobody would want to do that.
I know, I just don't see, under my motion, why. They shouldn't attempt to straighten it out, if somebody tries to go to their house. And they.
John, if they have a half foot of a brain, they're going to straighten it out, because it's in their best interest.
So hang on, Vice Chair, Mr. Levis has got his hand raised. Mr. Levis, uh, can we unmute him, please?
Good evening, um, esteemed commissioners and other participants, thank you for uh. Giving me some time here. I just want to make a point that we did have to go to the fire department and get preliminary planning approval. For our. Water flow, fire flow. And our. Walk around distancing. And at such time, the address. Was readily achievable or searchable in their system. And. Chris Cannelli at the time clearly recognized it as a bona fide law.
That answers the question, I withdraw, uh, with Craig's permission, I withdraw that. Portion of the.
Sure, sure.
Of the uh, uh, motion. As long as the fire department can find you, I have no problem. Uh, do we have the language? Uh, Adrian.
So I, I, I'm, I'm still looking, um, the, the only thing I want to point out is that um. Commissioner Maza, you mentioned ten feet, and unfortunately. Um, the language that I'm looking for only applies uh. Within riparian habitat and stream, and so.
That's what I'm saying.
So, but if you say within ten feet of that area, the, the ten foot area unfortunately would, uh, would be required to. Um, be. Thin, um, uh, similar to other zone C requirements.
May, maybe John could change his.
It says riparian habitat. Can be thin. Because the coastal commission doesn't say.
I'm, I'm looking for the specific language, just a second, I, the language in the. In the plans is very difficult to read, so give me a second, hopefully I can find it in the next uh, few minutes.
Should we move on?
Well, we have a motion.
You guys, you got, okay, we're gonna, you're gonna take away one, and John wants to care, Vice Chair wants to keep. This language in there, do, let's, we could take a, a quick vote and see if that's going to hold.
Well, we don't know the language yet, so the motion.
You know, I don't need to hear the language, I, I think. You just heard, hang on, you just heard from Mr. Levis and what they went through for the whole thing, I'm done, so let's take a vote.
No, objection, Patrick. Can you vote on an incomplete motion? You have to wait until the language is determined. Point of order.
Well, hang on, but so then, so then if the lotion, if the motion isn't complete, then it can't. It's not on the floor, then I guess someone else can make a vote.
Let, let's, let's let Adrian look for the language, and we can talk about other stuff in the meantime.
What other stuff do you want to talk about?
Oh, I have lots of stuff to talk about.
Commissioner Peak.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as staff's recommendation.
And so that would be. And so I think just to make sure everything's clear, I'm going to treat that as a. Substitute motion. And so the, the order of operations would be, we would vote on the substitute motion first. And then if that fails, go to the original motion.
Great.
I'll second it.
It's a very sad day when we can't spend two minutes to do things correctly.
We've got, we've got about twenty into this one.
Reminds the way you operate when you're slack. But go ahead and, and follow Mr. Donigan's motion. You don't have a second yet, but I.
Uh, we, we do have, we have a second from Commissioner Jennings.
I want to be sure that it was Commissioner Peak's motion. It was not mine.
It was.
Can I just say, I have plenty to talk about still, we're not near a vote.
Well, we're near a vote. Let's take a vote.
Cut him off without.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, if, if. If, if Commissioner Hill has more. Items that he wants to discuss on this project, he should be given the chance to discuss it before we take a vote.
I haven't, I haven't even begun, so. Okay, uh, since we've been talking a lot about Esha, I'll jump to that in my schema here, but. To me, uh, it's a question of. Justifying the Esha variance. The staff report makes the argument because. Even if you had a smaller project, there would still be some Esha impact. And there are some overlapping of fuel modification, mod zones. Therefore, the, any amount of impact is okay. And I don't agree, I think that we have a duty to minimize impacts. I don't think we just say, oh, just because there'd be some in any case with any development. So the question in one that I would want to know about the Esha impacts is. Do we have any evidence on the table, and I don't know that we do. From the surrounding vicinity, maybe five hundred feet or a thousand feet. That other homes have enjoyed a comparable expansion into sensitive habitat. Such that not allowing it here would be a deprivation. That would be what you need for a variance. I don't see we have the evidence, I, I, I mean, maybe a bunch of those houses have. Done similar expansions into the Esha. But um. I don't see an, an exhibit on that, and I sort of feel like if, if. If the exhibit hasn't been presented to us. Then sort of prima facie, we have to assume that the case hasn't been made. So. I guess this is a question for staff, what um. Do we have, can we characterize at all? The degree to which others have been allowed sort of a licentious expansion into the Esha?
Um, so there's. Obviously, uh. There is a house uh, immediately next door, the house was there at the time, uh, by the way, this application. Was submitted eight years ago, um. And so at the time, the house to the east uh, was still there um, uh, before the fire took it down. Um, but, but that house was um. Uh, in line with the proposed residence, um, however, they are. Closer to the stream as the stream takes a, a curve and. Moves away, I guess, from the subject property.
So, so that house had even more Esha impact.
That one did, and the fuel modification from that house. Overlapped with most of the fuel modification. Of the proposed residence. And the proposed residence does extend further out, and that's just because. It's on the side. Now, there is another house or another adjacent lot. Owned by the same uh. Uh, uh, property owner as the subject property owner, uh, and the plan for that site would also be to develop it at some point. Um, and then you will have the fuel modifications complete of the development on the same side of the street. And uh, I would imagine that. The impacts of every subsequent house would be less as. They're. Uh, overlapping with each other.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, so before I get to my next uh, or questions and, and, and. Concerns. Just for the record on this point, it just seems like when you're trying to justify variance for Esha impact. Once you get above something like, you know, I don't know, five thousand square feet for a single family home. It gets harder to allow justifying more. A, a bigger house and more environmental impact. Given that, you know, your, your house should be suitable for purpose beyond that size, so. Uh, that's just something for the planners to think about. A, a, on, a couple of questions about viewing.
Could we, could we, have, are you open to some comments on that? Because there's.
Yeah, absolutely.
In my view, there's a pretty clear answer. This is a ten thousand square foot project, and the, if you, if you. Look at the provisions relating. To the ten thousand square foot area that's allowed, even if there are extensions into Esha, it's in the section that talks about. No takings, it's talking about, these are the minimum amounts. That uh, should be allowed in order to avoid a taking. The Act itself, the coastal act. Clearly states, and, and as. Everything under the coastal access, this act should never be interpreted to, to affect a taking of any private property. Because that's, that's the way it was set up. So the ten thousand square feet is designed, it's, it's the. It, it's the concession by the state that. Okay, Esha's important, this is important, that's. Okay, Esha's important, this is important, that's important, but you gotta give the guy the ten thousand square feet or the twenty five percent of the. The lot side, whichever is less.
But, but the ten thousand is a maximum and you.
Yeah, no, it's the, it's the, it's the amount that avoids a taking. That's what they're saying. They said, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get into the whole. Uh, definition of what's a taking and what's not a taking. We're gonna say arbitrarily ten thousand square feet. You get that. You don't get more.
Comment?
But before I go on, yeah.
Vice Chair Mazza.
The city of Malibu has never been sued for a taking. And takings are exceedingly rare. They are never ten thousand square feet. The court has established eight hundred is the minimum to establish a taking. Saying ten thousand is taking simply does not follow California state law and Patrick can comment. But there is never fine to taking for a ten thousand square foot house.
I, I think we have an, you know, an ongoing discussion and argument about this that's rapidly getting into the weeds. Um, we, we, I think we're aware of each other's positions on this, right?
Well, I, it's just, that was a misstatement of fact. I just want to point that.
Yeah, no, you're right. But, but, but we're not talking about this project right now then, when, when we go down that rabbit hole.
Well, well, we are because you're saying that it ought to be reduced and pulled back from Esha, even if it means that their. Ten thousand square foot development area is reduced as a result. At least that's what I hear you say.
Well, if they're asking for a variance for the Esha impact, that implies discretion. Right? So. Why would, I, I'm, I'm not, you know, this is me now being fuzzy because I'm sick, but. If they, if they're asking for the variance for the uh Esha impact, then. Clearly there's, that's, that's the fuel mod going beyond the ten thousand feet.
No, it's, it's the same argument that goes on when you've got a house that, that you've got a property that's all Esha. And you say, okay, fine. You gotta let them build what they can build. You, you have to process that as a variance, but that's simply because you're, that's the mechanism by which, by where you get to the result. But the ten thousand square feet, if you, you know, just read the LIP, it's in the section about takings. And that's why it's there.
The LIP states that if you have a property that's all Esha, if it's a thousand acres. You get ten thousand square foot building pad, not house. Okay?
No, see, okay, John, it's a ten thousand square foot development area. That's the term they use. And my understanding is that that's what this project does use is the ten thousand square foot development area. Not, it's not a ten thousand square foot house.
Okay, and any house in that development area. As Craig says, it requires a variance. When it does, we have the ability to see if that house is designed to minimize. Okay, is the four, is the two thirds used? Is the setback used? Is there a variance for front yard setback, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Not just, oh, you get automatically whatever you want.
No, and nobody's arguing that, John. That's your straw man.
Well, that's what was being said. You get to build ten grand if you want to.
No, you're.
That was never said.
Okay, well, anyway, uh. I believe. That we are required, because it's a variance, as Craig says, to protect Esha. I don't know why we're arguing about. Clearing out a stream. When it's very obvious in the stream section of the LIP, you can't do that. Okay? Very obvious when they say you need fish and game approval, you've got to get it before it gets approved. We don't have an approval on this staff report. We don't. And we need one, if that's what you're gonna do. So all I'm trying to do is get around a little rinky dink thing about how far the, the clearance area goes by modifying it. Not to violate the stream part of the Esha of the LIP, our LIP. And not to violate the federal law on getting prior approval from uh. Stream, whatever the stream agency is called. That's what it is required. We don't have prior approval here, so unless we do something. Are not allowed to approve this.
Com- Commissioner Peak.
Um, so. Uh, John, I would very much like to incorporate the language that you're kind of refer. Referencing in a hypothetical that we can't currently find. And I think that there's probably some agreement on that from some other commissioners. But I don't know if we can find it. So my question is to Patrick, how do we deal with this?
I would potentially bring in Adrian and, and, and Richard here in, in terms of, is there language that we think? While we do not have it specifically, adequately addresses the concerns.
To achieve that goal.
Right, and so I, I, I believe I understand what, what, what Vice Chair Mazza is, is, is positing. However, I'm not quite there yet to formulate specific language, so, so Director Malika, can you? At least help me out a little bit or, or no?
Certainly, I've, I've also been looking through the LIP as we sit here, because it's got some. Guidance on clearing of state lands and. Adrian. Do you? I'm, without a magnifying glass, I can't read these plans. I'll be honest. The, the, the fine print there. I could do the pretty pictures. But, yeah, thank you. Run out to the garage. But Adrian. You know, to me, I think the concern is clearing in, in the riparian habitat area. And the requirement that it would be neat, uh, that, that permits from. Fish and wildlife are required and also Army Corps of Engineers. Um.
Could I just say, like, couldn't we just put some very simple language in there that if anything is to occur in that area, they must receive approval of. Fish and game and Army Corps of Engineers?
Exactly where I was going with this, Commissioner Peak, yes.
Dennis, is there any problem with doing that?
No.
Okay, Jeff?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the LIP.
John, a, a, any issue with this?
No, no problem, as long as the, the uh. Applicant is aware that not to go in there with. And to clear it out, so.
Okay.
All I'm trying to do is say, we can use language, let me try it. Um, and you correct me, Richard, if you want to change it. That. Uh, in any, uh. Do we want to just use the word riparian habitat or we want to say ten feet from the stream or? Well.
Say in the stream.
In, in that.
In the stream bed.
It includes riparian habitat too in the.
You, you use the word riparian habitat. That's, that's.
Applicant will not clear. In the riparian habitat. Or the, or the stream. Without. A permit from fish and game. And any other federal, state or federal agency that requires such permits.
Fish and wildlife.
Fish and wildlife.
Commissioner Jennings, have you heard us?
Um, yeah, no, that's fine. Okay.
Sound good to you, uh, uh, Patrick?
A- absolutely, provided that we have that kind of clarified at the end in any other, you know. Pertinent or any other applicable federal agency, so we're not trying to box them in. Got it.
Okay, that's my motion if Craig will accept it.
Sure.
Well, so hang on, so, so we, we, we had, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So I had put a motion that I had said, um, we can, let's add the language that says. If you're going into this stream, you gotta, got agency approval.
So are they both the same motion, Scott?
Okay, so my next question was, I think Craig had had some other comments.
Yeah, yes.
So I didn't want to be. To vote and shutting that off, but.
We, we, we could do a straw poll if you, if you, if Patrick, if you want to just say that that's a, a modification that we would. Looks like.
Sure, so I mean, at least, at least what, what, what I'm hearing in, in, in my, my, my mind. Is a friendly amendment from Vice Chair Mazza to Commissioner Peak's motion. I believe he. Indicated acquiescence or acceptance of that, and so then it would go to Commissioner Jennings as the. Second of the motion to see if he accepts that friendly amendment.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
That, I want to raise the same issue that Scott did. Craig, have you got other issues on this case?
Yeah, I have a couple of things that center around view concepts, view concerns. One, back to the view from Canaan of this. And, and, and the question of why is this not hillside development for the scenic visual and hillside resource protection ordinance? The question at, at the outset is, is, is there any language in the code? That restricts the effects of any amount of view from a designated scenic road. Um, because chapter six of that, uh, uh, si- six point two applicability quote. Any parcel of land that is located along with in provides views to or is visible from. Any scenic area road, public view shall be governed by the policies of this chapter. That doesn't say, well, if you can only see a little bit of it and, or if it's further away than a certain distance. Or as, as far as I know. And we just saw from the city council meeting, uh, now two meetings ago in the case on the appeal on Doom Drive. That uh, on the PVD there, any amount of view of those Santa Monica mountains was significant and qualified. So I just wondered if there's any. Language on, with respect to the hillside resource protection ordinance that says anything to the effect of. Well, you know, it's, it's gotta be uh visually impressive or significant amount or. I mean, it sounds to me like what we're looking at on here is, yes, you can see it from there. And yes, it is on slopes of two and a half to one or higher. And the ordinance applies, and so that would imply a house with a max height of eighteen feet. It would imply. A twenty five percent reduction in the development area. Um, it would imply having to keep the overall. Height of the structure on the slope to thirty five feet when it's now something like, I don't know, forty five or fifty ish. Uh, it, it would imply a completely different project, really. And it seems like we just kind of glossed over it unless. There is some language that says, yeah, this, this view has to actually be very important, uh, for this ordinance. To, to apply.
Seems to the canyon. What are you talking about? You're acting like. It's right in front of you.
I, I, I'm acting like you can see it from Canaan Doom Road.
You can see a lot of things from Canaan Doom Road.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's also on, on two and a half slopes and so. Uh, wh- where is the discretion in the code? This, this talks, this is uses the words is visible from. Any, any parcel of land located in, in any scenic area or public shall be governed by the policies. Where is the wiggle room that says, eh, this isn't really significant, so we don't have to apply this law?
I think that the wiggle room comes in precedent, and I think that.
Well, there's, that, that might be the answer.
I, I think that that's kind of how, that's kind of how I look at this. Um. You have a lot of houses that are in this very area, some which have been approved maybe recently, some of which have been there for a long time. And I don't see, I think it's important when we look at view to look at things that are. You know, it's not on the top of a religious line. It's not the highest house up on the road. You know, nor is it the lower house because there's some houses maybe low in that area, but as you come down the canyon, some of the other houses can, are gonna get lower. Um, as the elevation gets lower. So, I mean, the, the way that. I guess, Craig, I'm hearing what you're saying. I could be driving anywhere as I'm coming down Canaan, if the house that's on the flat part of Point Doom would have an impact on my view, then it should be. Reduced and everything else, and I, I don't think that that's.
But, but it's on the flat part. It's not on a hill.
Well, there's hills all over the point. So.
But, but two.
I don't think, I don't think that that was written in a way. Where this was to apply to this project, the way that I see it and the way that it looked at when I went up there and looked at. So, I'm just putting that out there.
What, what does Adrian have to say? He's got his hand up.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, I, I, I have a, have the, the answer, I think, uh. Hopefully, uh, answers this question, so um. While the project does include construction on slopes steeper than two to one, um, that construction. Is for the driveway. Uh, the, the rest of the development is on areas flatter than, uh, three to one. Um, or, or flatter than thirty percent. Um, the, the, the reason that the hillside standards. Um, in the municipal code did not apply is twofold. One is. Um, the, the um slope analysis as required. In the municipal code is uh to use a ten foot contour lines, which is different from the five foot contour lines that we use. For just developing on slopes. Um, with ten foot uh slopes, um, the, the, you know, the, the area that we're. You know, the mounts that we're talking about, uh, flattens out. And um even that disappears, but.
Hey, hey, hang on. The slope analysis itself shows areas of two and a half to one directly under the house itself. It's not just the driveway.
The driveway's steeper than that.
My, my internet just, it's not cooperating with me today. Um, I, I think I heard that the color code of slope analysis shows two and a half to one under the house.
There, there are strips of two and a half to one under the house.
Uh, again, those are based on five foot contours, but the, the majority. I, I'll, I'll take a look. I thought, I thought there wasn't anything under the house, but there might be, like you said, maybe a strip or, or two. But um specifically. The, the municipal code, um, as it pertains to hillside standards. It uh states to use ten foot contours. So those slivers you're seeing would disappear uh as you make the, as, as you. As you use ten foot contours instead of the five foot contours that are typically used. Uh, for construction on slopes.
Or, or the three different slivers would average into at least one sliver at a ten foot contour.
But they're, they're gonna disappear.
We, we. That, that's just a presumption, so I don't know.
It, it is, and we can perhaps uh get that data. Um, we, we didn't get the data. Obviously, as we just found out last week. That um, the property was visible from Canaan Doom, so um, up to that point. Uh, we were not aware that this was visible, and in fact, I went to the site a few times and could not see. The house from Canaan Doom. Um, but um, i- if that is something that the commission would like us to do, we can bring the analysis. About that. Now regarding the road itself. Uh, the road in the fire department turnaround is excluded. From the construction on slopes of, uh, steeper than thirty, thirty percent when um. Uh, establishing whether hillside standards apply.
Right, that's right. Okay, so we, we had that point kind of hanging out there. I don't know if we'll necessarily would get any votes on that, but um. Why, why don't I also just mention about the PVD? Uh, I think there's a view issue there. Get in the last piece of my paper here. The, 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 the. Here. The, we have language on the, the primary view in the PVD ordinance. That refers to visually impressive. Right? And it also, in this case, what would be blocked by this house. To the neighbor who has the PVD is a valley, a canyon, valley or ravine. They don't see the very bottom of the ravine, but they see the flank of it. And the, this house would block the flank, and one of the criteria listed for what does constitutes visually impressive. Is in seventeen forty five oh four oh. Criteria E, the extent to which the primary view contributes to the economic value and or enjoyment of the claimant's property. And to my mind. Putting this house here would definitely. Uh, in blocking that bit of ravine there would definitely lower the value of this house. Um, it's, it's an impact on their view. And I don't think it's sufficient to say, well, it's not blue water or it's not uh pristine Esha, something, whatever. It. It, it qualifies to the extent that you think that there's any economic impact in, in, when that view is reduced. And maybe that's a point of discussion. Uh do you want to just say? Well, you know, maybe that reduces the value of the house by a hundred thousand dollars, but it's a. Ten million dollar house or whatever, so who cares? I don't know.
Go ahead.
Did the. So Richard, the person that came and had the city do the P V D. Did after seeing the photo and whatnot and how that laid out and the.
Good question.
Site plan lines.
Good question.
Did they object to where the house was or no? Because it clearly from the photo, it's not blocking any of their ocean view.
Right. Yeah, I can answer the question um. Yeah, we we did meet with the property owner across the street um. There were a number of revisions made to this house, um just so that everyone knows. Um the they pushed the house closer to the road and there was a. An element on that uh upper level. That originally was uh very close to obstructing blue water or may have obstructed some blue water and they revised that as well. Um when I met with the neighbor across the street. Um and this is mentioned in staff report um. Uh the. The neighbor's husband had just passed away and he was the one objecting to this project originally. Um she still uh had some reservations uh about the project. And uh was gonna contemplate whether to object to the project officially or not. And then um I heard from the applicant that they had a conversation with the neighbor. And that the neighbor. Um said she wouldn't object to this project provided there wouldn't be any additional changes to it. Uh that would further affect her view. Okay.
I I guess sort of what I. What I hear in in that is that. Some of this has been worked out as to what those objections were and that's, you know, through the multiple revisions that have been done, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so. Craig, with what you're saying in regards to the views and values and all that stuff. I don't think that anyone can dispute that if you had a. You know. Property and you have views all over, you have three hundred sixty five degree, you know, you can see three hundred sixty degrees around you. All of a sudden, the house pops up, right? It's blocking part of that view, that's gonna impact a property. Right, similarly though. You have a street like this, you have a fire burnout, there's a couple more houses that are developed, you have a nice, you know, new project that's. Coming into the neighborhood, a nice well-built house. At the end of the day, that can also increase the value, whether or not it had. The impact on smaller in part on someone's view, I think that the biggest impact that. I would say that I ever understood in this community and having been on council when some of that, some of those things were. Done is. You care about looking at the ocean, you care about looking at the Santa Monica Mountains.
Yeah.
And those are, I think, the things that us as a body ought to put the most value on. And really recognize that in because that also establishes for the community and for other people that are coming forth with projects. Kind of where the parameters are, and I think that in this situation. They architect designs a project. They hear some concerns from the neighbors, they, one of the neighbors goes through the primary view determination. The project changes. And it changes in a way that allows it to better fit in before it comes to us, which I think is the right thing to do.
Absolutely, but I think I think what we've just heard is that there has been some accommodations, some back and forth. But there's still some residual concern on the part of the the view owner.
So and and look, if that person still, you know, has a tremendous amount of concern to that and we. Elect to move forward with the project, they can always appeal that to the council and raise those concerns.
Yeah.
But but you you like, you know, I think we we just, we need to know that and that should be. We try to resolve as many things as we can here, but we can't always resolve everything.
Yeah.
Can I comment? Vice Chair Mazza. This is in a fire burnout area, when was the view determination made? Was it made after two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah, the primary determination was recently done, I wanna say uh end of February.
So it's my understanding. That in the in the uh Wolsey Fire area, you may not, may not have a view determination.
I think that was just Malibu Park, though.
I I.
Jeff.
Everywhere that was Wolsey, is there, is there an answer to that?
Jeff, wasn't that just Malibu Park?
We we we.
I don't remember it being limited specifically to Malibu Park, but I'm not on staff, so staff can tell you.
It it's not limited to the the Malibu Park or, you know, it's just limited to the fire affected areas. Uh wherever those could be.
So in this case, we're talking about something that's moot, they cannot have a.
Well, well, um the reason for that um provision was. Uh because people were requesting primary views. Uh for view preservation purposes, uh once um most of the landscaping was burned out as a result of the fire. However, as a matter of policy, we have been processing. Primary view determinations and we had a few of those uh come to the planning commission before.
And 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 in the Wolsey zone?
Uh where the where the proposed development, right, actual development is obstructing views. Uh then we do the primary determinations for that and we still uh bring those issues to the commission and, you know, uh those are part of the decision.
Well, I I this is a question uh for Patrick, I mean, this is the second time under this discussion. We're talking about actions by the city council. That said, number one, you can't get a view determination in the Wolsey zone. It didn't say unless staff figures you can. And in the case where Craig read the law about. The hillside ordinance. And staff said, well, we can determine what that means and Craig read it and it said shall must, et cetera, et cetera. Does, and this is a question for Patrick, does this, does the planning commission have the ability to change? Council passed items.
Uh thank you very much, Vice Commissioner Mazza, before I get that, I'm gonna turn it over to uh Director Malika, he did have some thoughts on this first.
I agree, thank you.
I believe the ordinance that's coming into question here is, I wanna say four ninety five, I I'm probably wrong, I haven't looked it up. But it it the exact wording is that. A pause was put on. Primary view determinations when. They were in fire affected areas, meaning that the view was over fire affected parcels. And so we have been, as Adrian mentioned, processing. Uh requests for P V Ds and when we get those, what we do is we look to see what's in the P V D. And. You know, is this a situation where a house is now looking out over a a. A a blank landscape because and by that I mean buildings and landscaping because it was all removed by the fire. And in the case of this property, it the. The properties, yes, the the property to the. Uh west of it, uh north and west, that that's a burnout and uh also the property that is on the. The the immediate uh east side of it is burned out, but beyond that. It it's a ravine and then on to Canaan and uh you're looking then at at Point Doom, so. It does not appear that a P V D in this area would have be affected by the fire and that that's why it took place.
Well, let me ask you this. Forty-three houses burned down on Point Doom. Okay, uh houses burned down on uh Galahad. Below it, houses burned down on Cavalieri to the right of it.
Done, the house burned down right next door to it.
I know.
I I I I understand the issue of what you're saying, I don't. I just don't see that the P V D that's been done in this situation is gonna change. Any of this. Based on what's in front of us.
No, I'm just trying to follow precedent, we had a house on Heather Cliff. Or off of Heather Cliff, some little cul-de-sac where staff allowed the the people that own the house. To move the second floor and block the view of the people behind them. And staff said, nope, they can't get a view determination. There's a there's, and but there were no houses in front of them other than that house that got burned down. So we have to be consistent, if we tell one person, you can't have a view determination. What I'm saying here is. This is moot, there's no view determination. We can't, it it's, I do not believe. That the city council passed an ordinance saying. In a fire affected area, you can't have view determinations, but left it up to staff what was fire affected and in this case we have. Bunches of houses in the neighborhood burning down. So uh. That expires on June thirtieth, I assume. With everything else, but in the meantime. We shouldn't even be talking about beauty terminations here.
Great, so let's stop right now.
I I I would say, I would say I hear there are three yes votes here somewhere. And I have like three more points I would like to just get on the record. And if somebody wants to talk about them, great, but I think like, you know, I'd just like to at least put them on the table. Uh ready? Number one is um two thirds rule. Second story is as big as on on the garage. Uh is as big as the garage, it's basically a two-story box. Um. You see that on sheet A three point one, A one point one, A one point two. Um and it it leads me to the thought that if just conceptually. If I was designing a house and I had my two thirds rules maxing out. Could I just expand my three car garage to a four car garage? And that would allow me to add more on the second story?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Uh point, penultimate, penultimate point, the site plan review. Um we have the height here. And neighborhood character and I don't see that we have any exhibit showing other houses in the vicinity over eighteen feet. I'm sure there are some, but uh. I don't know what the proportion is, I don't know if it's, you know, most of them aren't over eighteen feet or what the. I I feel like if we're gonna be doing the site plan review, we should have. The uh the exhibits and the in the data in front of us to make that determination. And then finally, uh the rooftop deck. I just wondered, do the immediate neighbors know about this and the the answer is probably no because they're burnouts. And so now it looks like they're gonna come back and find their new neighbor looking down on them from from the platform from above. I I just feel like. There's there's something inequitable about that with all the issues that rooftops decks have in terms of privacy. We're setting up a potentially problematic situation here. When those those rebuilds who, you know, they those people ha- have an an investment in that neighborhood and that character already. They're gonna come back and find somebody, you know, looking down in on them, I don't know that that uh we've handled that well.
Uh Craig, following up sort of on what you said, um Richard, have you or Adrian or anyone at planning heard anything from the neighbor who's burned out?
But we did hear from them um. I wanna say about a year and a half ago, um. This was before the house was moved uh closer to the road um. The owner at the time was objecting to the location of the house and they wanted it to be more in line with with their house. Uh since then, uh that property owner has sold the house or the property. To a new buyer and the new buyer is currently pursuing the redevelopment of that property plus ten percent.
Are are they aware of the rooftop deck specifically?
Uh I, they never reached out to me, um but the the notice went out to everyone within five hundred feet. So I'm sure they were notified, um but um they never reached out to me, so I don't. I don't, I don't believe they are aware of the deck, perhaps.
We we also don't know that, they could have looked at this, you know.
Uh do we know, do we have in our? Resolution. Our standard protections for the neighborhood for rooftop decks, dark sky. Time of closing, et cetera, et cetera.
Or big, no big uh overnight objects. Uh we we do not have those conditions, but if the commission would uh would have us at those conditions, we can certainly do that.
I have a. Adrian, that's a a question on those conditions or or Richard, either one. Are we not applying those universally to any rooftop deck? Or is that project specific?
And maybe Richard can. Answer the question, as far as I know, they are custom conditions um. Project specific.
Uh just uh at the last, the the last time we heard one. We asked staff to come up with standard language so we could use it not to reinvent it each time. And uh. Then we could tweak that rather than try to have a whole bunch of different ones, I assume they have done that. Yeah, but again, we need to. This is a light issue and a noise issue for a neighborhood, which is a fairly quiet neighborhood.
The 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 house, the whole project's gonna be subject to dark sky ordinance, so I don't. Correct, Richard?
Yes, and that should.
That should alleviate those concerns.
I'm looking at that's. Conditions. Uh fourteen through twenty.
Okay, so.
That's only dark sky, there's other conditions.
I I don't have issue with us imposing conditions on the rooftop deck. But. I just, I think it's more of like a policy thing, so we stop having to waste like time on this. That we ought to figure out something that. You know, we come up with that's sort of universal for that. Just have to waste time on.
We couldn't understand, you can't leave umbrellas up, the lights have to be off, you can't have things above the handrail, we kinda have that already.
Yeah, we have the standard language.
Okay, so is that, but I thought that that was just not implemented on this, or did I misunderstand that?
Commissioner Jennings, go ahead.
Well, I just, the the limitation was. If those remaining objects would be above the permitted height. Uh if if I I I'm looking to find out where the deck is on this particular project. Um and it may be. Maybe the maybe the architect could help me out. Um. It it may be that it's not required in this particular project if I could find the deck.
Well, while you're looking, uh.
A four, A four point one.
The thing that's problematic, Skyler, is it's more than dark skies. It's uh view, it's also noise. Uh et cetera.
I no, I I very much understand that, that's why. That's why I'm just, you know, raising the question of if. So that we don't have to put all these things on it every time.
So at the last year.
That's all I'm saying, I don't think that we have an issue with agreeing on what they can be, but I don't wanna waste an hour doing that right now.
No, no, and the last hearing we had on decks, we asked staff to come to. Formulate a standard paragraph we could use. And I'm sure they've done that. And I would like to put an amendment in. Uh a friendly amendment to use. Staff standard language.
So you're asking for this to be written up and brought back to us for approval then?
Well, they they. We asked them to have it ready so we could read it into the record if they do have it ready.
Chairman Smith?
Go ahead.
Uh Adrian, I'm looking at four point one. Uh. And what I see, the deck I see appears to be. Uh on the sort of southeast portion of the. Of the uh home is it, I'm. Right above some some windows, is that the deck we're talking about?
Yeah, so sheet A dash three point one, uh if you look at that cross section. That shows it better, it's a small rooftop deck.
Yeah.
That's accessible only to that um. I I think it's gonna be used as a somewhat of a. Of a guesthouse area up on top of um the garage.
And that's, I think that's less than eighteen feet right there.
Uh well, the it will be over, it's right at. Eighteen, or excuse me, it's right at the height limit um where the railing is. So any furniture above the railing uh would likely be over the height limit. So we can, we can certainly add a condition. About um deck furniture not to exceed the. The height uh of twenty eight or whatever, twenty-four feet for flat or twenty eight, yeah, eighty. The height uh of twenty eight or whatever, twenty four feet for flat or twenty eight, yeah, eight feet.
I I don't think the table and chairs and all that, it's always just been like umbrellas and stuff that we can't.
Yeah, we're talking about fixtures, furnitures and fixtures, the and potted bombs, all that stuff.
Yeah.
That's in our language, I believe, I I believe our language says above eighteen feet. And uh.
And we're granting the site plan reviewer on this one, aren't we?
Well, Skyler's saying, and what I'm saying is, we've tried to come up with standardized language. Uh, to cover everything and, for example. Uh, the dark sky says. String lights must be. Have have uh monitors with a motion, it doesn't say you can't put in a hundred. Non string lights. You know, it it's, but the way our, as I remember our. Yeah, our uh. Revisions for rooftop decks with. They must be light censored and uh. Uh, once somebody's gone for ten minutes, they have to shut off. It doesn't, it has to be a string light, there's there's little things, a way to get around things that people use, um.
I don't think that. We're. I I let's. Get to the point where we can wrap this one up, because otherwise we're not going to get through the agenda tonight, and I think that's just like.
Well, if we could get that language, do you have that language, Richard, or is it something we should have brought back? Or can we say?
But John, the other part of this is, you know, we can't just be like making up language without having like, you know, an ordinance from the city council saying, hey, look, you can follow this language when it comes to roof decks.
Skyler, we make resolution language on almost every shit thing we discuss.
Yeah, okay.
Right, but but it raises. It raises a point. That that we have done this because. Of neighbors' concerns and so forth, but the issue has always been. Nothing in the in that the city council has done to prohibit or control or regulate these rooftop decks at all.
Well, that's why I asked. Patrick, which I never got an answer on. Do we follow the city council's? Words if they pass them? Okay, can we change them? And we're changing them all the time.
Sure, so Vice Chairman Maza, I believe the question you had asked me dealt with the primary view. Determination in the in 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 the Woolsey Fire and Director Malika.
That that no, I I I specifically I'm after. What Craig brought up is the hillside ordinance is very specific, it said you shall, you this, you that. And then we get, today we get planning commissioners saying, yeah, but you know, I don't care about a canyon or whatever else, it does not say that in the law. So in the ordinance, so are we allowed to change ordinances?
So if the if the planning commission does not believe that this project complies with the. Pertinent or various ordinances, either addressed by Commissioner Hill or 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 anyone else for that matter. You guys, of course, are in that decision to 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 voice that. If you're, if you're going to ask me the question, can the planning commission make law and basically ignore? Direction from city council in the form of a of a of an ordinance? Uh, Vice Chairman Maza, no, of course I'm going to say no, however, I do not believe that that is the instance and for 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 this project before you. Or else staff wouldn't be recommending it, our office, our office would not have reviewed it and cleared it, so I know you can ask a hypothetical. In regards to this project, which is a tough, tough question to answer.
I'm not, this is not a hypothetical, when an ordinance says. You shall, not you can, or you may have a variance, says you shall. And we shan't. Or whatever you want to say, we just say, ah, forget that. To me, that is. Not legal, and that's my question. We aren't authorized when they use.
Sure, yes, I will, I I I will say that that typically in in the rules of statutory interpretation. Shall is mandatory and 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 may is permitted.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
So, uh, Dennis, we were listening to, um. Uh. Commissioner Hill's additional comments and he raised three. Man, that that exhausts your your. Concerns then, right?
Uh. Yes, except to point out that we're talking about is there? Council authority for limiting things on roof decks, and I would say, yeah, that we have the whole. Series of sections in the general plan about. Uh. Privacy. That I've called out before and I I have written up on a sheet here to have handies whenever we talk about these things, so. It's not like we're we're making this up without authority, there. There is a basis to it. But on on that note, I'm I'm. I I will close my. Ledger.
Okay, I'm gonna, let's, we can do this, uh, Rebecca's got her hand up, uh, Ms. Evans, go ahead.
I just was going to state that the condition I believe, uh, the commissioners were referring to in the last time that we adopted such a condition. Stated nothing left overnight on the proposed rooftop deck may exceed twenty five feet in height. As measured from the existing lowest finished floor elevation.
That was for a house.
And then, and then it included the specifics because that was a beachfront standard.
That sounded like that was from a house on PCH.
Yeah, it was, it was.
When we did it, it was a house, uh. On sea level or the one after that, uh, it was the one. It was on land.
Okay, well, what 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 if any of that stuff do we need to apply here?
The nothing, the the umbrellas come down, you can't leave that kind of thing up, everything, it's got to be. Flat, if your chair sticks above the railing, I'm not sure that that really causes any grief, it's really. Umbrellas and and if people have lights strung everywhere, I don't believe they can do that either, so.
Okay, so.
Um, really, we kind of have a thing.
All right, so all of that language.
Skyler, it it basically said, and the reason for the twenty five feet is the beach, but uh it it said. Uh, you may not leave any furniture or or anything above. Moveable above eighteen feet.
I got it.
And. And. It must be. Light. Monitor, uh, motion sensor monitor to where ten minutes after it's vacated, the lights shut off.
Correct.
There was a couple other things. Uh, about. What time of night you could, you had had to shut off, you couldn't have a party till four. Uh, I think it was eleven. This is language we worked out and, uh. Either Adrian or Richard can say whether or not it ever got. Put into, we asked to make a standard thing, if they don't have it standard thing, I recommend they come back with a standard thing, so we don't have to do this over and over and over again.
Okay, so again, I just asked specifically to Richard is whether or not this language is included in the existing resolution, yes or no?
No, the rooftop deck in terms of leaving materials out, um, that is not. Uh, the dark skies provisions are about lights being turned off after specific hours, that of course has been included. Um, if the commission would like, uh, yes, I believe it was a uh sea level drive house. Uh, we can incorporate the conditions as mentioned. Uh. By believe was uh Chair Smith, which had to do with. Uh. The prohibition on leaving out items overnight that exceed eight that would exceed.
See the height of the rail?
Right.
Okay. Good, it.
Commissioner Jennings, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking at four. Dash oh one B, and if that's the deck I'm seeing, it looks like it's on the top of the garage. And. It's mainly. That there there is a. Building to the right of it, right? Everybody got the page I'm looking at?
Yeah, for it was on.
Up on the top, see, the question is, you know. We we say rooftop deck like, you know, like. Uh, I'm not, I wouldn't call that a rooftop deck, are we going to apply these rules to every deck? Uh.
You're just going to call this one a deck?
I I could offer some clarity. I I think there's a difference between a balcony versus a a deck that covers a whole roof area. And to me, the the main concern is given that we have dark sky already, is noise, is the 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 noise factor.
So 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 how 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 wide a deck is prohibited or it comes under constraint and if it's a narrow deck, I mean, we've got. Is it going to be eight feet, ten feet, twenty feet, where are we going to go with?
I think it's hard to make a specific rule because every case is different, but but in terms of noise, it's. It's a big difference if you have, you know, ten people on a on a balcony. And the party that it can make versus a whole roof. With, you know, a hundred people on it.
Well, I I I think we're we're. Making problems for ourselves.
I I would recommend, I would recommend that we. Direct staff to include. The language on the sea level property and bring the item back to us. For approval and. Uh, approve that language. And then we can be done with it, and then hopefully. When they come back, they'll come back with language we can use over and over and over again.
Well, personally, I would not apply those, the same strictures that we've applied in other cases to this deck. It's it's a small tiny deck above a above a garage. And um. So I wouldn't support that.
Well, we can, we can have a definition, have staff come up later, the definition of what a deck is.
I would say, I would love to have staff come back with a a list of. Of uh. Restrictions we could impose in an inappropriate cases. Whether it's an appropriate case or not is something that we're going to have to decide, I think, on a case by case basis.
Like a menu.
Well, hopefully you have one or two standard paragraphs, so we don't have to go through this every time. And then we decide, is it a rooftop deck or isn't it?
Okay, um. I I do not want to add the friendly amendment in regards to the uh deck stuff, I don't think it's necessary here.
So you don't want to have any restrictions on that deck?
No, I don't, based on how the drawings that I just looked at.
So hang on, so Mr. Donigan, where are we as far as our motions and all that kind of stuff, we we need to move here.
So we we have a original motion by Vice Vice Chairman Maza, seconded by Hill, we then had a substitute motion by Commissioner Peak. And seconded by Commissioner Jennings. Who did accept the friendly amendment regarding the any clearance in the right, and once again, this is not verbatim, I believe Richard has it. Any clearance in the right parian habitat area must uh receive approval from all pertinent and applicable federal agencies. And that has been the only amendment, uh, friendly amendment accepted by Commissioner Peak and Commissioner Jennings.
Okay, and that would be the roll call we would take first, am I correct?
That is correct, Chair Smith.
Sure, we have a roll call.
Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what this vote, this one is on.
All just, so this is, okay, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So so it's on, it's on Commissioner Peak's motion, which is staff recommendation with an accepted friendly amendment. Regarding any clearance in the right parian habitat must receive approval from any and all pertinent and applicable federal agency.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, back to the vote, um. Go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
No.
Vice Chair Maza.
No.
Chair Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's take a minute, you guys.
Five minutes back.
Five, eight forty, eight forty six, eight forty seven.
Yeah, I'm I'm fading a little bit here, but I'll I'll hang in as long as I can.
Have you taken your temperature?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I tried to tell you before, I I have about a one degree and, you know, I figure, you know, unless it gets worse, there's. Going to the emergency is kind of crazy.
Yeah, I just. But I want to see you expire in front of us.
No. I'll go off screen to do that.
All right.
I do know your address, though.
And please make sure to turn off the camera and the mic, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chair Smith, I'll have my video turned off, but I am back in the meeting whenever you're ready to continue.
Your video is on.
Yeah, I was just letting the chair know that I'm present in the meeting, um, again, after recess and available when the rest of the commissioners are present.
Well, I like seeing you, Rebecca.
Likewise.
We got, oh, Commissioner Hill. Nobody's at the east end, so we don't know if there's any ambulances going.
He's, he's on the site, I don't see if he. What happens, can you turn his camera on and see if he's there?
Yes, I do that.
Hang on, yeah, I, I, I don't think we should, if we can, remotely turn on anyone's camera.
I don't believe we can, anyway.
Yeah, we're, we're just a planning that commissioned, uh, Vice Chair, not CIA.
Okay, we'll wait.
Not New Yorker magazine.
Michael Cohen.
Do we wait just like one minute and then we have enough people to get started?
Chair, I, I think that would be fine at your discretion, particularly too, since Commissioner Hill did indicate he may not be back. I guess Rebecca, if you have his phone number, we can text him and or email him. But if not, then yes, Chair Smith, it's your, up to you.
I'm gonna go ahead and get started here, since we're, we're at eight fifty-two. So we're on new public hearings, we're on five A. Coastal development permit number twenty-one dash zero six five. Site plan review number twenty-one dash zero three six, lot line adjustment number twenty-one dash zero zero three. Lot merger number twenty-one dash zero zero one, and demolition permit number twenty-one dash zero three five. Application for a remodel of an an application of a remodel in addition to an existing single-family residence, new detached garage, lot line adjustment, lot merger, and associated development. Mister Senior Planner Eaton, it's all yours.
Thank you, good evening Chair Smith and members of the planning commission. The next item tonight is, as mentioned, a CDP for a remodel, lot merger, and lot line adjustment. Next slide. Um, the three parcels involved in this application are nine oh four nine Cliffside, Cliffside Drive, which will be referred to as Lot A. Uh, seven one four zero Grasswood Avenue, which will be referred to as Lot B, and two nine oh five five Cliffside Drive, which will be referred to as Lot C. Uh, the three parcels are all north of Cliffside Drive in the Point Doom neighborhood. Next slide. Uh, the project proposes the following, it's an interior exterior remodel of the existing residence on Lot A, uh, resulting in thirty-eight point two percent of exterior, exterior walls being demolished. There's demolition and addition of second floor area resulting in forty square, in a forty square foot reduction of the existing square footage of the single-family home. There's the demolition of the existing two-car garage on Lot A. A new seven hundred square foot detached garage with rooftop terrace and exterior stairway on what is now Lot B. Um, a remodel of the existing set shed structure on Lot A. There's outdoor lighting in compliance with the dark sky ordinance. And a new permeable driveway and accessway from Grasswood Avenue. There are lots, uh, new lots being proposed in this application. The project involves a lot line adjustment between lots A and C. Uh, a lot merger between A and B. Uh, the newly proposed parcels one and two. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, there, there are also two discretionary requests proposed for this application, a site plan review for construction of the twenty-five feet in height for a pitch roof, and a demolition permit for the demolition involved with the single-family residence and also the existing, uh, detached garage. Next slide. So as mentioned, the project proposes, uh, the lot merger of lots A and B is shown here. There's also a lot line adjustment between lots A and C. The lot merger indicated to the right as the newly created parcel one will result in a parcel that will meet the lot development criteria of the NMC for the rural residential one acre zone. The newly created parcel two will absorb the flagstaff portion of the existing lot A. Uh, parcel two will still be non-compliant, uh, particularly with the hundred and fifty-foot minimum lot width. Uh, but the side, it'll come closer to compliance with the size requirements. Uh, parcel one will gain its new access from Grasswood Avenue. Next slide. Uh, so here's the proposed site plan. As mentioned, uh, there will be a proposed remodel and a second story addition to the existing single-family residence and a new detached garage. The existing shed will be remodeled with in-kind windows and doors and a re-roof. Uh, there's no proposed demolition for the shed. Uh, there's also a new driveway and a fire department turnaround proposed, uh, to the north of the parcel here, uh, via Grasswood Avenue. And all of the construction will take place on parcel one. Next slide. The second story addition to the main home will be a maximum twenty-five feet above grade. And as such, the applicant is requesting a site plan review for development over eighteen feet. Uh, there is no public or private protected views, uh, anticipated to be impacted, uh, which will also be discussed a little later on here. Next slide. The new detached garage with rooftop deck and exterior staircase will be fourteen feet above grade, and, and that includes the safety rail. Next slide. The next few slides here demonstrate view impacts via the installed story poles. This slide here shows a south-facing view. Uh, the proposed height is in line with existing, and the applicant chose to design the pitch in a way that mimics the existing conditions. Next slide. This here is an east-facing photo. Next slide. Uh, this photo here is from Cliffside Drive, no impacts are anticipated from scenic areas. Next slide. Uh, story poles of the garage here, it's kind of a square shape. Next slide. Um, so there was some concern kinda, as, as well as I heard in, in the last item about the proposed rooftop deck and the garage and the potential, uh, above the garage and the potential lighting impacts. So this project is conditioned to comply with dark sky ordinance at all times, however, the commission, commission can consider additional conditions related to this one, which was placed on a, on a recent project, which further limits lights on the, the rooftop deck. Uh, you can also, um, consider other issues, uh, that are raised with rooftop decks. Next slide. The recommendation is to approve the project as conditioned, and, uh, we are available for any questions.
Okay, thanks, sir. Uh, back to us, disclosures. Uh, Vice Chair Maza?
I, uh, sent a series of questions to Tyler and had a discussion about, he, he answered those adequately, and I had a discussion with him about Grasswood Parking. Which was a gen- which I'll bring up in the, uh, general discussion.
Commissioner Peak?
I visited the site and met with, uh, Elaine, the architect, and with the owner, and I didn't learn anything other than seeing it in person, uh, than we've discussed so far this evening.
Commissioner Hill, I see you're here.
I didn't know I was gone. I looked at three D modeling of it, other than that, didn't learn anything new, no disclosures.
Commissioner Jennings?
Done.
I too went there and saw Elaine and Cynthia, wonderful person, what a piece of property, oh my god, is that thing terrific. So this is a, this is a pretty sweet setup, but they, she got there in eighty-three and, and they hung on, they've hung on, she's hung on to that, that whole thing. It's nice, okay. Well, let's see, we'll go to, uh, public opinion?
Staff report? Staff report? Oh, we just had it, I'm sorry.
I just wanted a note for the record, Commissioner Hill, you, you were there for the entirety of the staff report, correct? You heard it?
I might have missed the first ten seconds or something, but I don't.
But nothing substantive, thank you, Chair Smith.
Okay.
And I apologize, we do have some background sound with the custodial group at the moment. Um, Elaine Rene Weisman, Nicholas Blondin are both from ERW Design, and the owner Cynthia Shott and Mindy and Paul Peterson are all available to respond to questions and reserve the right for a rebuttal should a member of the public wish to speak in opposition. No one has signed up in advance at the meeting, if you're present in the meeting and would like to speak on the item, please click the raise hand button at this time. And seeing none.
Okay, that closes the public opinion, public hearing, and now we're to us, and of course, Vice Chair Maza, go ahead.
Well, I don't necessarily wanna be first, uh, if anybody else wants to. I have two issues, and one, in general, there's no problem with the property. When I looked at the uh, plans, there appeared to be easements on it, which the applicant has confirmed have already been taken care of. So there's no problem, uh, there. Uh, one problem I see, and I think we need to, to address this, and that is that they're putting in a new entrance on, on Grasswood uh, with a new driveway and new gate. And, uh, site plan shows uh, encroachments into the public right-of-way. And normally on Point Doom, we kinda look the other way, but this particular street is in the bullseye of hundreds of residents and the coastal commission. And it's already cost the city upwards of four million dollars to fight this battle. And that is that Grasswood is a parking street per the coastal commission and per the agreement with the city council in two thousand and ten. So I would like us to include in the resolution a, the requirement that encroachments into the public street and the public property be removed. Uh, because there's gonna be a big battle over parking. And if we do not remove it, in my opinion, and the attorney can, uh, come in on it, if coastal comes in and demand it, then we're gonna have to go and sue the applicant or something to remove it. So now's the time to take care of it. If it were some inland street or something, it's a different deal, but this is ground zero right now on Point Doom, and you'll see all the VOPs up there every weekend and, uh, the craziness that's going on. So, uh, that's one thing I would like to recommend. The other thing is, uh, this is, number one, it is viewable from a scenic road, a specific scenic road. So and it is downslope from other houses. So I think we need to consider what conditions uh, the, the, um, rooftop deck gets. And I asked Tyler this afternoon to dig up some of those conditions. They don't have to be all of them, because this is a fourteen-foot deck. With, well, it's eighteen feet when you add whatever, but, uh, we need to consider the string lights, we need to consider sound, we need to consider shut-off time. Uh, because this is in a quiet neighborhood, downslope from houses above for light and, and upslope from houses below for sound. So, um, I, I would like to discuss that also, and I'd like to ask, uh, well, specifically Tyler, the comment on those two items. I, he, he was told me that he was gonna come up with some language he'd used before on the rooftop deck. Uh, but first, uh, how we stand on encroachments into the city eastman. Unless you don't want me to ask him now, you guys wanna comment first and, uh, ask others.
You've, you've asked a question, so we can see if we can get her answers, uh, Senior Planner Tyner, uh, Ty, uh, Eaton or Director Malika, you guys have an answer for that? I mean, they gotta get an encroachment permit to put the gate. Uh, I'm sure, I, I guess there's a parking issue over there, I don't, I'm not, I will be honest, I'm not that familiar. Uh, the gate, the whole opening will probably be twenty feet for the fire department, so that's one car. So, um.
Ho- hold on, the, the project that you're referencing, there's currently all no parking in front of this house. So I don't see what the issue is that's being raised here, John.
According to our agreement, as I understand it with, with the coastal.
This portion of Grasswood.
Yeah, I can clarify, I can clarify, I go there, uh, often on full moons to meet with friends on Point Doom to watch the moonrise. And yes, the first part of Gr- Grasswood is no parking, it takes, I don't know, just past this lot is where it becomes free parking.
That's correct, this is no parking, and the way that I see the drawing here, the, um, the gate that is proposed is outside of the city's right-of-way.
Oh, no, I have no problem with the gate at all, I'm just worried about having a problem with coastal
And I don't.
other street. And so I see no reason to encroach, number one, because it's never been used as a, uh, entrance before, so. So we're going to, according to what I've been told, we're going to have to come up with as much as eighty parking spots at Point Doom on that corner, that area. And I think it's beho- behoven upon us to protect the city.
Are, are, are you saying that we should move the no parking sign that's currently?
No, I'm not, I'm saying we should ru- remove encroachments on city property.
But if there are no encroachments on what's proposed, then what's the issue?
There are encroachments, if you look at the, uh, if you look at A one O, you see the foliage and all that junk.
Yeah, so, can I clarify, is that okay?
Yeah, please do.
So, so, um, there's a driveway front that's proposed, uh, from the right-of-way. Um, as far as the, the, the gate, Commissioner Peak was correct, it's on the actual property, um, that's proposed, but there's an existing fence and some vegetation that, uh, is within the right-of-way that this property kinda uses as a, as a boundary. Um, so that's what I believe, Commissioner, Vice Chair Maza is referring to. Uh, but it's existing, so they want, uh, them be having a less than fifty percent remodel, they weren't required to, um, you know, bring this, anything into conformance, but I believe that's what you were referring to, right?
That's what I'm referring to, but, uh, the only time you are restricted from bringing things into conformance if it was permitted. This obviously was never permitted.
I have, uh, so I, I just have like, a, a comment on this, like, in terms of following the contour lines and whatnot. The flat, the flat part that's up on Grasswood for this house is not necessarily, it's not very large, but it kinda follows, if you go to what it would be, maybe the, the northeast side of, of. The northeast side of the. Um, among the or the uh. Site plan A one. The. Like, are we are we going to ask them to remove the chain link fence in its entirety? There are.
What I'm what I'm proposing is. Encroachments on city property be removed.
Okay, so that would be the existing.
They are on city property.
The existing chain link fence and potentially a small portion of vegetation.
Yes.
Okay, can we have the applicant come on here?
Um.
Or Elaine?
Elaine, I think.
The applicant's representative is um. Under the identity Bernard Rene.
Yeah, that's Elaine, right? And can we let her speak for a second? I have a question for her.
It's not allowing me.
Oh, we can hear you now.
You are hearing.
You can give me now. Yeah, I discussed this issue about the existing chain link fence and vegetation with the owner who's sitting next to me. And she is. She has agreed to relocate the chain link fence and remove the vegetation.
So. That's awesome. The only thing that I think. Can potentially inhibit part of that and how that's set up. Is that the the topography of the land sort of drops off? It if you go to the site plan on uh. A one.
Yeah.
The lot kind of slopes down, which would be the top of that page. And go into that contour line where it's falling down, and I just think that. For the city, well, one for the property owner, but also for the city. It's probably in the city's best enter- best interest to have that. Um. Fence that gets relocated to go. Kind of. Follow the elevation of where the road is. And it's going to put it a couple of feet on that end. Potentially. Into the city's right of way.
Can I ask you a question? Why why would you want? The city would be liable for that as long as as well as the. Owner. Would you want the city to be liable?
It's not so much that I want the city to be liable for it, John. It's the fact that if all of a sudden we have. A flat area of road and then we're dropping down three or four feet at one part for a fence that's. Only six feet high and impermeable above forty-two inches that that. Fence sort of becomes useless for the person's privacy, and we're talking about an area where. We have all these people walking and parking. And and by the way, a lot of people park illegally in front of this lot right now. Right? Because it's it's one area that's vacant and the cars go there. I just think it's smarter to keep it up on that higher line, but if nobody wants to do that, it's fine.
Or you could say the fence follows the edge of the pro- this the city. The property line. But that the height of it can conform to the with respect to the road bed so that when.
That's fine.
Down, it could be a little bit taller in that one spot maybe, or is that breaking the code?
Well, it's breaking the code. You'd have to give a variance for that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Our Commissioner Jennings.
Yeah, what we've done in the past in situations like this is to just to make sure that. The that the city is not permitting. These encroachments into the public right of way. In other words, they've they've existed in the past. That's fine. That's on the landowner. All we want to make sure is that we are not saying that's okay. That's not that is not to be permitted.
Okay, so.
And then they can handle it however they want to handle it.
Well, that's that's somewhat true. Except. Except the very next corner. Doom Drive and Cliffside Drive. We restricted the. The owner. Nothing on the city right of way because of that very reason. And because of the proximity to the park. And uh.
So then we can we can resolve this by not, I mean, I think the question's sort of been answered like. We're just, they can put the fence in. It has to go outside the city's right of way, and you guys are willing to make them allow her to make it tall enough. So that it would become six feet off of whatever the height of the road is.
Yes.
Okay, does does anybody have an issue with that?
I don't have an issue. I don't know exactly what you're talking about, but I don't have issue with it. How how many feet would that be?
I don't know exactly what the.
I mean, you're guessing twenty feet or fifty.
No, it would be like, you know, eight feet or ten feet only at one end.
That's no problem at all. I'm just trying to eliminate problems for the landowner and the city.
Okay, I just want I want to make sure too that Elaine understands what I'm talking about. And that the homeowner understands what I'm saying.
I want to understand what you're talking about.
Well, no, so the 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 topography of the land, the.
No, no, I get that part of it. How do you how do you how do you all of a sudden waive? The restriction on fence height on the front boundary? How many?
Variance.
That's what I'm saying is.
But there's no variance applied for here, and that would require bringing this thing. Sending it back and bringing it forward again in order to grant the variance.
If that has to happen in the future, that has to happen in the future, but I'm just saying if we're going to have her if we're requiring her to remove the fence that's in the city right of way. Right?
My my option would be not to require her to remove it. You just say. We are not permitting it. It's not it's not part of this project.
And then if there are any issues.
Too, I don't.
It is part of this project. It is part of this project. They are creating a totally new entrance to the property.
E- either, yes, they are, but.
We're giving them permit to do that. We're giving them an encroachment permit to do that.
The encroachment permit is for construction.
Of a driveway.
It's the driveway. Yes, it's an encroachment permit and.
For the driveway, but not for the fence and not for anything else.
Okay, so and we have to state in our motion. The encroachment permit does not include any encroachment. The property line.
No, we don't. The 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 project, we would say the project does not include any of those. Improvements which may be outside of the property line, the 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 boundaries of the property. Um, and that's it. It has has nothing to do really. Except that the two, you you use the word encroachment in both settings. An encroachment permit, it just allows the work. To be done on the public street in order to be able to build the driveway, but. We're and that's fine. We can do that, but you don't. If you don't permit anything that's outside the property line, you just leave that for for whoever wants to fight over it. If she wants to move it.
That is why I'm making the motion, or I'm going to make the motion, or. I'm going to try to make the motion that. We. What we're after here is we've already spent over twelve million dollars on this. Fighting the Coastal Commission. And it looks like we're going to fight them again. And I'm trying to save the city money and the property owner grief.
Okay, hang on, Vice Chair. Vice Chair, let let Senior Planner Eaton answer this.
Yeah, thank you, Charles. Just gonna, so uh, for a point of clarification, if if. Uh, and I just want to make sure the homeowner is aware, like Commissioner Peak mentioned that. Uh, we're saying that if if they do move the fence, they agree to that. Uh. One, are we saying that doesn't have to comply because this would become a front yard fence, in which case. They would lose a bit of privacy. Uh, because I believe that the existing fence has a kind of a meshing, you know, up to six feet tall. That gives them the privacy as of current day, but if we're looking at it. As a new parcel and this being the front. Uh, you know, the forty-two inches solid would apply.
And it is a new parcel.
Yeah, unless we can get creative.
Parcel is parcel one, not A and B.
Oh, Richard, correct me if I'm wrong. Could we say they can install a fence? Because in this case, as it gets in, it could be um a side yard fence, and we could say. Uh, the 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 fence can be installed prior to the new lot being created, in which case, you know, it's still a side yard fence.
It's two CDPs. Let me ask you a question, Skylar.
I'm getting awfully creative here.
How much difference at height are you talking?
I mean, I'm just going off of the contour map now, but having been there myself, I believe that on that side of the property. It it becomes. It drops off a little bit quicker, so.
I'm talking two feet, ten feet, six feet?
I'm you're talking about a couple of feet, but I I I just wanted to make sure that the. Owner was aware. Just like uh how Senior Planner Eaton just described that currently the, you know, when that fence goes away. The new fence has to go further, you know, into the property. Because of where the city's right of way is, and then part of part of that drops it down the hill lower. So if we want to say. You know, yes, we're not permitting anything in the city right of way, other than, you know, we're allowing them to get an encroachment permit for the driveway, and if they leave their old fence, that's fine. If they come in with a new fence, we deal with it at that time. That's fine.
And I'm saying that causes legal problems for the city. But the opposing it is. It's a small thing to do. But. If you study Point Doom, you know what's going on.
I very, John, I very much understand what you're saying. So I was trying to kill two birds with one stone. I recognize that I can't entirely do that right now. But. I would like to make a motion to approve the project as is, and those things can get dealt with later.
How?
Uh, well, she can either remove the fence if she wants to remove the fence, or she can come in with it and apply to build a new fence.
Okay, I'm gonna, I I I have other questions. I I think. But just. I think when you punt on a problem.
We there is.
Trying to be efficient, and when you punt on a problem and you're going potentially going to cost the city. A whole bunch of legal fees. Should think about it.
But it's not.
It's very simple to solve.
Our people work. Commissioner Jennings, Commissioner Jennings, go ahead.
I'm going to second the motion, but I want to ask staff if there's any way that we can. Memorialize the fact that we are not granting a permit for any of those improvements that are outside the property law.
I'm in total agreement with you on that.
Staff?
Yes. So that 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 would include the driveway apron, right?
I'm sorry?
That would include the driveway apron, because that's what's being proposed and uh.
There's 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 an apron that extends outside the property law. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, you well, yeah, that connects to uh uh Grasswood Avenue.
Right, yeah, Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, but I I'm looking at sheet. Yikes, change pages here. Uh. The. Third sheet in.
A one O.
A one O.
A one O or.
F one.
Yeah, I think that that is a good one to use. Tyler, am I mistaken in that the only. Item that's in the right of way, and I also looked at the Public Works referral, is the driveway itself.
It's it.
There's no, so. This approval would not. Um, be retroactive to anything else that's currently. Existing or in that area.
Correct. This is just the driveway, just a new driveway. And her gate, and she drives down there because she's got no way to get. She's had all those years with her neighbor on the other side. This is a terrific idea for her.
No, I that's that's great as long as um. Uh, the 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 implication kind of been is raised because you show the vegetation. That's there that that encroaches. And the fence that's there that apparently encroaches as well. Um. It I would just like to make it clear that that's not part of this project and it's not being permitted.
That's correct.
And I'd like to make it clear, and I'll make a motion on this after you vote on yours. That. They are encroaching. They have no permit to encroach, and it should be removed since it's a new development. And. Because the reason for that is. One block away, we did exactly the same thing. And. I very close to a park, which is under contention with the city and. There's no reason why the city should eat a bunch of legal fees. Because somebody encroaches.
Can I can I ask for clarification? What is encroaching? Because I'm looking at the. Uh. An aerial view on on Google right now and 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 a street view. And there is plenty of room to park all along that fence, but for the fact that there are no parking signs. So. There's. How how wide, how much is that fence into the city right of way? Because it it seems like. And and what how much more does the public need there exactly? Because if if you can park there, you you're good.
Not according to the Coastal Commission.
Well, we're not worried about them right now. All we're trying to do is.
Well, that's that's the problem.
But that's that's.
Problem.
But that's a hypothetical problem.
Wait, wait, my my question is.
Hypothetical.
Skylar, you're you're muted.
If you go to the topographic survey, which is the second page, you will see. Where the existing chain link fences and you will see where the city's right of way line is.
Yeah, I can't read that. It's too small.
Uh, the fence is like a chain, it's like.
The fence is about five to ten feet in from where the city's right of way is.
Right, and then.
Yeah, it's.
And A one O shows a bunch of foliage also.
You're saying the fence has captured five feet of the width of the right of way.
Yes, and if you look, if you go to the next page, which is the slope analysis, you can see it again there.
And and the confusion, Craig, is that the. The right of way is is the the easement right of way is not fully paved.
It's it's one of those forty foot right of ways, probably, right?
It's probably a fifty foot right of way, but it's twenty-five feet on her side of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, twenty-five.
But a- as a practical matter. We could just treat it like it's something it it's exist pre-existing now. And and if, in fact, the coastal and and the city have a dispute about what needs to happen there, who knows? Maybe coastal will say, yeah, what you need to do there is. Put in a retaining wall and put diagonal parking or something, but then that's on them later, you know, that's not.
They couldn't require that because they'd be encroaching onto her property to do that.
To actually perform it. Yes, you're right. You're right. Uh, but I guess.
This this isn't in in our purview right now. The only thing we're worried about is getting her down that driveway and getting a coach encroaching permit from Public Works. So she can drive in there. The rest of this has doesn't have anything to do with this tonight.
So so my.
Why do you say that?
John, Mike. My question to you, John, John, what is the benefit or the effect or the significance of? Uh. Moving the fence five or ten feet away. From where it is now, if people could actually park along that side with the no parking signs were gone.
Because because. There's a bunch of additional parking spaces that are going to be created some point in the future. And. We did it exactly the same way, one block away. And. But these spaces. Public property. You don't play public property unless you have to.
We're not doing that.
The spaces exist. The 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 space is there already. It's just the signage.
No, 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 no. We own from the property line. Wherever the street is, okay, we own it. Now, if you're not, if you're going to say, okay, put a fence on it and and grow some stuff on it. That's on city property.
We're we're not saying that they could put a fence on it and grow some stuff on it.
Saying, don't look, don't don't make them correct a violation.
There's there's no the whole Malibu's a violation on right of way. If you drive on any street, people have gone all the way to the right of way and beyond, Vice Chair.
And 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 show me in. Real estate law is all written, hundred percent of it, okay? Show me where it says. No, no harm, no foul.
Mr. Donigan, does this have anything to do with what we're talking about?
So the 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 most recent question from from Commissioner Mazza, I was a bit unclear on regarding the no harm, no foul. But regarding the the overall issue regarding, you know. Encroachments and or potentially existing encroachments and what Coastal Commission. May or may not do. You you are right, Chair Smith. It is a bit outside of the purview. Of course, if there was an attempt by this commission to attempt to remediate that problem. You know, that would be, you know, yeah, that that that's probably a bit too far sighted in terms of what's before you tonight.
So you're saying we have no purview uh over. City land.
Very good.
Not what I said at all.
I like that, Mr. Hill. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. That's good. Thank you. I like that.
It's prettier than me. Uh, but but I wonder, I wonder, do we have any comment about that? It's basically a construction fence, right? I mean, you're not supposed to have chain link out on your. What what would that fence need to be replaced back at the actual property line? That's a temporary fence.
That's her fence.
That's a temporary fence that's been there for a very long time, a lot of.
Exactly.
Had chain link fences in the front of them, and that's the way they are.
I I know we had to put up a chain link around my property after the the Big Rock slide stuff and the house was yellow tag for a while. And once the yellow tag was lifted. I don't know who it was because I was living in Seattle at the time, but somebody in the city, I think, came in and said, all right, you got to take the chain link fence out now because it's not. It doesn't comport with code. So I don't know.
But this, once again, this doesn't anything to do with what we're talking about tonight. We need to, we've. But this, once again, this doesn't anything to do with what we're talking about tonight. We need to, we've got a motion and a second. We've got another, we've got another project.
Okay, but I have other, other things to discuss. What are we doing about the deck? Tyler came up with some language for us to review at my request. We have another rooftop deck. Again, we have standard language, which he's gonna have. We have a house that is viewable from a quiet neighborhood. And a. L I P required view street. Okay, so. Are, is anybody willing to discuss restricting use of rooftop decks?
Not on this one. Have you, did you go to the site and see where the garage is? It's out in the middle of nowhere.
Here, here's my concern about the, the roof. It, yeah, that's, that's, that's true enough. But it's about five feet from the property line and there's a house like five feet on the other side of the line. So it's about 10 feet from the neighbor's house.
It is not 10. I, I, I don't understand where you're getting 10 feet. It is way more than 10 feet away from the neighboring properties.
This thing's out in the middle of nowhere.
It's in the middle of the property. You're talking about the, I, I don't.
Maybe I was looking on a different.
What you're, no, what you're looking at is the old garage. The old garage is gonna be demoed. So the old garage is sort of the property line. The new garage is inside.
You're right. Brain fog.
No light restrictions on, on hanging lights, no restrictions on, uh. Furniture on the roof, no restrictions on sound, no restrictions on when they can start, when they have to stop their party. Nothing. Is that what we're gonna do?
Respect, I just, I don't see it here.
There, that thing, that thing's, God, what, I, I'm telling you, that property is just unbelievable. The, this garage isn't, I, I, I. Give all my teeth for this garage and to be there.
Have you ever seen a rooftop deck you didn't like?
Yeah, couple of them. We, we, we've come close on a, a vice chair, but this is not one of them. That's for sure.
What about the house above it?
Nothing by this thing.
There isn't? There isn't a house next, next door. There's a house directly next door to it. It's Sam Hall Kaplan's house.
Correct. Did Mr. Kaplan make a comment about the rooftop deck that's at the back of the property?
Kaplan is, is, is part of this transaction. But that doesn't mean he's gonna own this house forever.
What, what I just would like to know is whether ne- neighbors were notified and actually understand what a rooftop tech could be. And whether they're ma- they're made aware of the implications.
You know, what I don't understand is, is. In the last, what has it been? A year or two years? We've become fixated on decks and the noise and the people gathering, there's gonna be parties and there might be. Dancing and there might be all kinds of stuff and yet people put in swimming pools with decks around them all the time. And nobody says boo. I mean, it, I just don't understand. The obsession except that it came from one case where the neighbors that, oh my God, they're going to be looking down at us.
It's because acoustically, when it's high up, it, the sound can propagate without obstruction.
There's another reason.
Low down, there's.
That's the, that's why we, that's the decks versus swimming pool.
We have.
Yeah.
Real reason is in the last 10 years, we've lost a third of our population. A great deal of that is because of short-term rentals. And picassos. There's nothing to stop any of these houses from becoming party houses.
I'm pretty sure Cynthia is not gonna have, have this problem.
We do not, we do not give permits to individuals. We give them to properties. People are willing, are, properties change ownership and they change use. Okay, we never, ever, ever, ever should consider. Who we're doing it for. It has to do with the property. Oh, I like this person is not an excuse.
So every, so every, every house has to be looked at as a potential party house. And every amenity in that house has to be restricted in order to make it unattractive as.
Oh, exterior noise sources and light sources. Exterior noise sources and light sources are what we can regulate.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest that we've heard your concern and, uh, I don't think that there's three votes to support it and we've got another item. So if, if there are other items.
Motion, I'm gonna make a motion.
I have two questions still.
Commissioner Hill.
Uh, one, wha- what's going on with the extra wall on the garage? It, it looks, on some drawings, it looks like it's freestanding. Like a retaining wall, but on other drawings, it looks like it contains TDSF. Um, for example, the fuel modification plan F one point one. That's a question for Tyler. What is, is that structure or what is that area that it, that it captures there?
Um, Elaine can chime in. I think it's just an architectural design feature. The site is pretty flat, so I don't think it's a retaining wall.
So there's, there's no possibility that we've missed TDSF there?
No.
I don't think there's a roof, right Elaine?
Okay, my other question is just, just for my understanding. Uh, the staff report talks about how the minimum lot development criteria in RR one is one acre minimum parcel size. Doesn't that mean you can't have more than one house on an acre or less? But. Say you had half an acre within that zoning, a blank acre, you could still build a house on it. So. It, this would be a concern if they were subdividing, but it's not a concern when you're merging.
It has to be, it has to be less, less non-conforming. So they made the second lot two a little bit bigger. By redo, removing the. By ways, but they made it a little bit bigger, which made it qualified as being less non-conforming.
It can't be the same amount. It has to be affirmatively less.
What's supposed to be.
Okay. Uh, this, I can have this discussion with staff at another time. I, I'm just.
Well, they explained it in the staff report.
Okay, so.
A roll call on the.
Just take a roll call.
I'm making a motion.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor.
I know, I'm making another one. Okay.
You mean you want to amend it, you mean?
Uh, whatever amended motion, whatever you did last time. Okay, I'm making a motion that, that encroachments on city property are not allowed. And number two, that. The rooftop deck should not have string lights. Or any, any, uh, any per, protrusion above. Uh, 18 feet and must be, uh, light censored.
Is that one motion or two?
That's one motion. The second one has to do with the restrictions on the rooftop deck. That's one motion.
I, I don't think you have support for that, Vice Chair.
We have a second?
I, I'm with you on the rooftop deck. I, I just, the street doesn't seem like an issue at the moment.
Okay, you wait till the lawsuit comes. Okay.
Okay, Rebecca.
Uh, did you want to see if that would be acceptable to the maker and second or?
Oh, no, that, that was a, a substitute motion. I believe Commissioner Peak already rejected that amendment, but I will of course refer to him.
Correct.
Right, okay. Then Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on the next item, I'm going to recuse myself because I live right across the street. So I will see you later.
Bye bye.
On this item, I would like to make a motion for continuance because there is no landscape plan in the packet.
We have to have a public hearing, don't we, before motions are made?
So we, 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 we didn't continue that. I mean, arguably, I guess. We, we, we have done that this before in terms of when time does not allow it. Um, since it is only nine thirty eight and people may have stayed around, it's not. It's probably advisable to open the public hearing, receive comments, and then if that's the will of the, yeah, commission to do that. But of course, that, I, I do not believe that is legally required.
What's, what's not legally required?
That, if it was the will of the commission right now to continue the item, that would be fine. However, that is, you know, that, that, that is typically done due to the fact that we are under time constraints. Or, or it is done at the beginning of the hearing, excuse me, beginning of the, of the, uh, meeting. So that people do not, you know, stick around and, and, and wait. So it would be my advice to open the public hearing. And receive those comments since we are not under a time constraint, nor did we do that. However, that advice, I, I will say is not legally required.
Got it.
Okay, here we go. Five B coastal development permit number twenty one dash zero three three. An application for a new single-family residence and associated development. And we have Adam. To give us our wonderful staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, as noted, the project before you tonight is, uh, coastal development permit number twenty one dash zero three three at six, six, two, six, Zemira's Drive. Next slide, please. Uh, here we have a vicinity map, uh, showing the project outlined in green along Zemira's Drive. Next slide. And, uh, a photo of the site prior to the, uh, story poles being installed. It's currently a vacant site. Next slide. Uh, minor correction here on the total square foot, uh, in the presentation and in the staff report. Um, some missing square footage from the subterranean basement. And, uh, the light well, so, uh, it's a minor correction of about eighty-two square feet. So it's a total of. Four thousand seven hundred and thirty-three square, uh, square feet. One-story, single-family residence, two detached garages totaling in one thousand five hundred seventeen square feet. A one thousand eighty-seven square foot basement below the garage. Uh, two hundred and twenty-six square foot detached surf, surf shack with trellis. Tennis court, swimming pool, spa and associated equipment, onsite wastewater treatment system. Hardscaping and landscaping, I should say landscaping and grading and retaining walls. Next slide, please. I just look at the site plan, um, with the house, uh, on the front half of the lot towards Zemira's Drive. And about, uh, the rear third of the lot is a steep slope. Next slide, please. So look at the front and rear elevations of the single-story house. Next slide, please. Uh, we received some public correspondence, uh, three letters of support from neighbors. And one letter we received today, uh, from a resident expressing concern with construction vehicle parking along Zemira's Drive. Uh, which should be part of the record now. Next slide, please. And staff recommends the planning commission finds that the proposed project is consistent with CEQA and approves the proposed project as conditioned.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um. Disclosures. Commissioner Jennings? Commissioner Peak? Okay, Commissioner Hill?
None.
And, and neither for me. Um, we're on to public comment. Ms. Evans?
Um, the applicant team, uh, is represented by Douglas Birch.
Okay. No other hands raised, huh? Okay.
Yeah, Alex, thank you.
Yes, good evening Commissioners. This is Doug Burge. I am the architect for the project. Um, just a few things we wanted to note, um, is that this house is. Um, and always was an eighteen-foot-high house. Um, the clients themselves are an incredible family that are gonna be using this house. For their private use, not as a development, which is always something that comes up. Um, the other thing that I can report is there is no roof deck on this house, so we don't have to put any conditions on about a roof deck.
Oh, then we have to continue it so we can get one on it, please.
Well, no, you, you haven't even heard the conditions we put on a pool deck yet.
Exactly. Um, it's a little bit, it's interesting in this design. Because most of the, um, you would assume that the garages are actually in the front yard. But in this particular case, on the sun orientation, is that in this part of the street, we actually are taking advantage of the afternoon sun. Being so then the front yard is almost like a backyard and then that's why the driveway goes behind and the garages are behinds. So it's not a typical configuration. There are other tennis courts throughout Point Doom. We are not allowed lights, as we all know. Um, there was an issue, uh, questions, uh, earlier today about parking. Um, we intend to fully comply with whatever the requirements are about construction parking in Malibu. And also we'll go on to, um, the chosen builder, which is not determined yet. Will obviously be available and making sure that, uh, any neighbor who has any issues will be fully available to address those. As in any other job that we have under construction. So the owner is available and, uh, they're listening at this call. They would be available for questions as we would also. Um, we're very excited about this project. We thank the staff for getting us to this point. And, um, there was a discussion by, um, Mr. Commissioner Hill about landscape plan. We do have a landscape plan. Um, I'm sure Adam can refer to it and I'm unaware that it's not part of this, um, presentation. But, um, that's been addressed and designed and put through all the requirements of approvals. For the last few years. So, um, that should be there. So we will address that, um, as a question as we need to, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public present in the meeting who wishes to provide comment on this item and had not signed up to do so. Please click the raise hand button at this time. And seeing none.
Okay, closing. Public comment, back to us. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, sorry. I, I only noticed it late this afternoon and I didn't, I forgot about it when the, we had the initial plan, but. The landscape plan is part of the application. We didn't get that. At least I didn't get it. Um, and I, if anybody else, if everybody else got it, then maybe you could still pull through a quorum on it, but. I don't think we can hear it, what is effectively an incomplete application, as trivial as that might seem in the big picture. We, we, we have to look at whole applications. Right? Did, did, did any, did others get it?
Well, we know it's all drought tolerant, so there's, it's not really exciting. So how do you want to do that?
Well, my motion is to continue just because it, it's a matter of form. That's, that, that's something we need to see. I mean, we don't know, I don't know. I don't know if it's, if, you know, I mean, I know it's Doug, he's not gonna do something crazy, but, uh, you know, maybe the. Who knows? The client is just insisting on a bunch of palm trees and he finally capitulated or I don't know, you know? Think we need to see what it is.
We, we know that's not gonna happen. So, uh, Director Malika?
Yes, the, for whatever reason, yes, the landscape, the specific landscape plan was inadvertently laid out. Nevertheless, uh, the architect has the landscaped areas shown on the site plans. Uh, a number of the A sheets have it. The landscape plan was reviewed by the city biologist as well for compliance with our fire resistant, uh, landscaping ordinances. And also the L I P. Uh, we can also, uh, add them work, I think, to. Do a screen capture and send it over to Parker to put it up for the commission's benefit if they would like the exact species listed, but. Uh, you do, there is, I, the shrub areas. Um, we can go through them if needed, but they are the areas where they're showing some landscaping around the property. The, for example, on sheet A dash, uh, zero point one. That has the, the, the planter areas and patio there between the, the sports court and the house. Uh, the next sheet has it blown up. Uh, so be glad to. Uh, a- answer any questions and then Adam, are you able to email over? That sheet if it's the commission's pleasure to Parker?
Yeah, doing it right now.
So Chair, if you would like Parker to put that up. Adam will, uh, send him a copy of the landscape plan.
That's fine.
If needed for the commission.
That's fine. But I'm not gonna continue it. If we got the opportunity to at least see it, let's, if anybody's got anything they'd like to talk about, Commissioner Jennings, your hand is up.
Yes, we have in the past, um. When there have been concerns raised about, uh, construction, uh. Parking and all, and the rest of it, in, in terms of lay down yards and all the rest of that stuff, we have, uh. Years ago, we adopted the practice of putting a condition in saying that, uh, prior to the, uh, issuance of permits. The, uh, the applicant will produce a. The uh, the applicant will produce a construction management plan. February parking and all of the other concerns and. That would be submitted to uh, building and safety and had to be approved by building and safety prior to the issuance of permits. Is that condition or? Words to that effect uh, in our uh, in our resolution?
I know something I have to follow on all the jobs that are, that I've had, I've run into um, like this. That should be maybe the parking was going to be closed, so you, you do figure out ways to get people parked, so yes.
There, there are a couple houses under consor- with story poles and so this is going to be a busy, busy construction street.
I mean, I, I don't see this being an issue here for the size of the house relative to the lot size and how it's likely.
If nothing else, they can, they can park on the, on the tennis court area. Through the whole house getting built to take ups, they can stage on the tennis court, they can park on the tennis court.
The reason I raise the question is because uh, it, it. We adopted this practice in order to avoid having to uh, have the commission. Try to detail out exactly what is going to happen in terms of who's going to park where and all the rest of that stuff. We left it to, to building and safety for that very purpose. Because everybody in, in, you know, like in places like Naranda Lane and places like that, I mean, everybody has always got concerns. About where people are going to be parking and it's not really our job, it's not our expertise to figure uh, that stuff out. That's why we have adopted the practice of leaving it to building and safety. But uh, but we do have a. A standard condition which says that a construction management plan will be submitted. To building and safety and approved prior to the pulling of permits, and that's what I'm trying to find. If it's in our resolution, if it's not on our resolution, I'd like to submit that it ought to be there.
I would agree with that.
A million percent.
Okay, um, oh, oh, sorry, Craig was up.
Oh, okay, um. There's a huge storage room uh, in, as a basement. It's, it's huge. Does it not need a second egress? Or why doesn't it?
Because it's a storage area.
But I mean, you could just turn it into a, you know, playroom or whatever.
Oh, my God, that never happens here. Why would you think that?
I mean, but you know, if you have that much stuff to store, you're going to be spending a lot of time down there. You might need to escape by a different route. I, I, I guess the question is, what, what, what are the rules on this exactly?
I would think that when it's turned into habitable area, it needs to have a second exit.
Then and only then, there are no other cases where it need, does it need to?
I guess you could ask the architect, Commissioner Hill.
What say thee, Mr. Burge?
Mister Hill, always great to hear from you. So this is, we're talking about the uh, storage area under the garage, correct? Also basement under the. We talking about the storage area under the, under the garage?
Yeah, yeah, the, the big arena down there.
Yeah, this is definitely a storage area.
That's the party area.
Yeah, no, exactly, looking over the, the, the back lot. Um, no, this has never been talked about, but um, you know, this is always saying if somebody's going to do something illegally later. You deal with that legal later, or is there something that can be addressed uh, as we're doing the working drawings that? Would allow for um, a, a, another way in there or out of there? Um, I guess we could look at it and put it, put it down, but that's not the plan. That's not what we had intended to, to have it for. Um, because it's not under the house. Yes, it's under the garage. That's considered a structure, so I guess you can call it a basement. Um, and a habitable basin definitely needs two, two uh, ways out. So we can certainly look at another way out without getting into um, any kind of hillside. Area that would be, you know, over a slope. Um, and we could address that, Commissioner Hill. If that's something you like us to do, but again, we're not planning on that use.
Well, yeah, no, I'm not here to redesign your project. I just, I'm not clear on what the rule is because it seems like. Every time there's any, I mean, this, let's call, just call this a basement because that's functionally what it is.
Yes.
Every time we have a basement, there's like, oh, where's the second egress? And now suddenly we're saying no, and it just because.
Well, yes, it's a, at any time, yes, obviously if it's over six feet high, it's considered a basement. Um, in this case, it's like that, um. You know, to stop any kind of doubt, like I said, it would be not a lot of trouble on our end. We're not redesigning really anything. We're just. There's a current opening down there now, and if there's an opportunity to create another one, um, then that's possible. We had never looked at it. I'm just saying it's possible, um, and it's something that could be handled in the building and safety stage. If that's something you want to make a statement about.
Yeah, let's hear from Richard. Thank you, Doug.
Go ahead, Director Malika.
Apologize, I'm sending Adam the, the language so we can get it up on the screen that would address uh, Commissioner Jennings' comment. It, it, Doug, Doug, uh, I, I, you made the point. As a storage area, it's, to my knowledge, it meets the egress requirements. It's being permitted as such. Should the applicant change it in the future to something? Uh, they'll need to obtain a, a permit to make it habitable and at that time. Then uh, the, the egress requirements that are in place at that time will apply. Uh. This would be a situation of planning for somebody to uh, to convert it. And so uh, if the commissions will, if there's a majority vote to add a second means that that, that could be done. Um, this will be plant checked by the building official. As well, and this also, and Adam, uh. That plan was also looked at by the fire department, if I'm not mistaken. They also reviewed these plans uh, for access requirements as well, so. If it is permitted in the future, there's not a free pass because of what happens tonight. It'll have to meet whatever codes are in place at the time.
It, it seems too, I don't know what the, the pros and cons are, but that if you did have some thoughts about converting the space to something else later. Getting the egress in now would be the efficient thing to do, but. Uh, that's, again, I'm not designing the building. Um. Others, other, other uh, comments on that one issue?
Um, I have one, yeah, I, I, it's. It's a temptation hard to resist that, the idea that. Oh, well. This person who's designing this building or who's going to live in this building is really a, a. Proto criminal and they're going to uh, change the design in order to uh, uh, get away with something. And, and it's a temptation, but we really need to resist it. We're supposed to be judging. The applications that are before us, not something that might be turned into something else. Um, and if it's turned into something else, it becomes a code enforcement issue and that's not our responsibility.
Okay.
And thinking north, if they, if they, if they turn it into criminals later, that's up to them, but right now, we're not going to worry about all that.
Okay, next question, this is probably for, I don't know, Tyler or Richard, or I'm sorry, Adam or Richard. Um. Uh, the, the tennis court looks to be about, I don't know, about a foot from the front fence. And for, for, from the street and, you know, exactly, but uh, it's very close up there. How does that interact with the? Uh, you, you know, you can't have more than a four foot fence in the. That back, we're, we're up to six with the view, you know, the tennis court, don't you need at least eight feet? So what, how, what are we doing here?
Well, for the tennis court, it's uh, slightly below grade. So they're getting about two feet from the, the plane of the tennis court. And then six feet uh, for the fence next to it. Um, I'm sure uh, the architect can speak in more specifics as well.
So, so the, the. Top two feet are, are probably a lot of the tennis court fences view permeable. And there's a separate fence right in front of it that's also view permeable from four to six feet or forty two inches to six feet.
Uh, would, would Adam, correct me if I'm wrong here. The, the tennis court is two feet be- below, there's a cut there. Below road grade. And then you have two feet of retaining wall between the cut of the tennis court and the road grade. And then you've topped. The retaining wall with a fence that is view visually permeable of the permitted height.
Correct.
And the reason why that's allowed is that when you have a retaining wall that protects a cut located in a required yard. You are allowed to place a fence of regular height on top uh, of that retaining wall. Because the retaining wall is not visible from the street. Our, our code really doesn't care about what you see from your front window. It cares about what the person driving down the street sees.
Yeah.
If it's where the opposite situation, or we had a fill situation at a two foot wall. That wall would contribute to the overall height of what they have, so in essence, um. They, they're going to, the top of the chain link will be higher than six feet when you're standing inside the court.
But no higher than six feet from the street side.
Right.
Okay. Um, and then there, there's a trellis between the garages that looks like covered functional space. Um, does that or, and has that been counted as TDSF? What's, what's the rule on, I mean, it's actually like. It's, I don't know, hot quasi habitable space because it's.
Richard, I'm wrong, but I believe since the trellis is technically open to the sky, it's not counted as TDSF.
Yes, I was hoping to find an exhibit to that effect here.
Yes, so the question really is how open to the sky is open for something to count or not count?
Looks pretty open to me.
Yeah, our code just uses the word open to the sky, so if when you stand on it, you get rained on. Uh, we have considered that to be open to the sky.
Well, hang on, on this you would probably get rained on, but it's not, it's not open in the sense of all you see is sky.
You do all you see. Correct, it's a trellis and a trellis that's open, that doesn't have a covered roof on it at that size is not counted as TDSF.
This is just for after rejoice. There's nothing over the top of it.
It's not going to be covered with vines or something. All right.
Vines would still let water through.
We don't have the landscape planned, or, or do we have it by now?
I emailed the PDF to um, Parker and Alex. So they should have it. There we go.
There we go.
Holy moly.
Do you want it zoomed in somehow, or?
Yeah, or if somebody could just give us a tour of salient points, I mean, you know, are there any? Invasives or uh, who? It's, this is hard. This is really hard to just look at it and say, oh, yeah, that's great, or, you know.
If it's passed through the city biologist, it's not going to have any invasives and stuff in it. I don't see what the.
Right, no, you're right.
I mean, that's not really much of a conversation there.
Yeah, Courtney's, Courtney's already approved this.
Correct, and there is a condition uh, for no invasive and only native plantings.
Right, the biologist approved it. We, in our discretion. May have different concerns or considerations and we haven't really absorbed it or studied it, so.
What, what would we do? We're, we're not going to change anything.
This falls in the category of unknown unknowns, right? You know, if you don't know if there's an issue until you see it. I mean, I don't know.
This is an approved landscape plan. You asked for that, you got it. It, it had to go through all the things that goes through and it couldn't be where it is in front of us right now if it wasn't.
Right, I, I'm, as a matter of principle and process. I'm happy with the rest of the house, but I would be voting no just because I, I haven't had a chance to really study this. What I'm looking at right now is completely illegible. It's so tiny, it means really nothing to me. It's so tiny, it means really nothing to me.
There, is there a part of it you'd like to have zoomed in even more than this?
Here it comes.
Again, this is all prints. I want to be able to have this on my table and look at it for half an hour, you know?
Okay, so that's, that's a completely fair argument. When you look at it right now and what you see, is there anything on there that would cause you to change it or anything of alarm?
I literally.
Like to focus in on?
I literally can't tell what's going on. I mean, I'm just, my, I don't have good eyes. I need to look at it uh, in my house with my magnifying thing and, you know. So, um.
Well, I'm looking at the right side and all the way that I know how to tell something. I don't know family in order. Uh, which is to the left of uh, of uh, Carolina Laurel Cherry. Uh, Prentice, Carolina, so um, these are things that are approved. I, I'm not sure. You can't put, you couldn't go through all this if it's not good to go. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and all I'm saying, principle and process, I want the whole application. I'm, I'm outvoted three to one, I can tell it, so you know, you don't need.
Is there any, any other concerns with this? Uh, like not, let's, not, on, not on the landscape plan. If we can't look at it and read it the way that it is here, then let's just, we can.
No, I think I, I'm good with the rest of it.
So no, no issues on the house, no, no other issues, um. I mean, the, the size of the house looks like it fits the neighborhood, everything else?
I'm a little concerned about how close they are to the four to one slope, but I was unable to visit the site because I've been so sick and so I, I. Like, I don't really have a uh, you know, a definite comment on that.
Yeah. Um, well, having visited the site as a child. Not a long time, maybe with a BB gun or a paintball gun in the backyard. Um, I would just uh, add that, yeah, it does definitely, it falls off at the back there, but I don't think that. You know, there's a reason why Doug has cited the project the way that he did.
Yeah.
Um, and I, he's pretty cautious and.
I, I, I can't argue with it, so.
Well, I just don't have to argue with it. It's just, you know, it's a, it's a well thought out plan. Should be complimented.
There you go. Someone want to make a motion?
Uh, I will make a motion to approve, um. This project located on uh, Zuma's.
Paint Gun Road.
Looking for my, my plans in front of me. For item five B. Staff's recommendation. Boom.
Uh, would you be open to an amendment to include in the?
Yes, the construction parking plan.
Construction parking plan to be submitted to building and safety. There are construction provisions in here. But it, not the one that I was talking about. So what we're looking for. The uh, Patrick is uh, that prior to the issuance of any permits, that. The applicant will submit a construction management plan. Uh, to be approved by building and safety prior to the issuance of any permits, which I guess was redundant, but anyway, that's the idea.
Think, and also Commissioner Jennings, Adam's got his hand up. I think he's probably wants to clarify that for us, is that correct?
Yeah, I, yes, thank you. I, I do have the language here. Prior to the commencement of work, the applicant shall submit a copy of their construction management plan. The construction management plan shall include a dedicated parking location for construction workers, not within the public driveway. Typically, typically this is included in the, the public works conditions, but for some reason it was not included um, in their approval, so we'll, we'll add it in.
Great, thank you.
There you go. Um, Rebecca?
Do I have a second for the motion, please?
I will second it with that, with that amendment, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Sorry, but no, on principle.
Got a record to maintain.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, look at us.
Yeah, what are we talking about for the next hour?
I have to decide whether to go to the hospital or not.
Geez, well, you probably should just take a run down somewhere.
I tell you, as one who has spent a lot of time in, in St. John's and UCLA emergency rooms. I prefer the ambiance of the St. John's, but the food is slightly better uh, at UCLA, so keep that in mind.
Oh, wow, that's, that's a tough trade off. Actually, that has been the question, like where?
Yeah.
Any interest from anyone in a motion for adjournment?
Oh, yeah.
Field trip to the emergency room? Oh, okay.
And San Diego lost, San Diego State lost.
Oh.
Oh, that's too bad.
Seventy nine fifty six. My son in law who went to San, who went to San Diego State and his dad both went down there. The school chartered a flight or a plane and a lot of San Diego people went down for the game and they uh, they've been there since Saturday. They went to that, you know, they got to go to the exciting game and they were there tonight. Uh, I, during break though, I did look and, and uh, uh, saw that they had lost, but you know, they got there and that's terrific.
What's the score?
Seventy nine fifty six.
Oh, big, yeah, yeah.
They had a rough start. I've been getting updates from my husband. So Chair Smith, did I hear you motion for a? They had a rough start. I've been getting updates from my husband. So Chair Smith, did I hear you motion for adjournment?
Oh, yes, I did, sorry.
And do I have a second?
I'll say it then.
Chair Smith?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Guys.
Commissioner Hill, if, if they do any cognitive test on you, you, you're gonna pass with flying colors.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I feel really blurry. You know, it kinda.
I'd be a really good reason to go, Craig.
It's, it, it kinda comes and goes. I'll, I'll be fine for an hour and then messed up for an hour, so you know. I, I figure I'll just uh see how I go.
Yay.
Hi, everybody.